Good morning.
Good morning.
Call Adams County Board, send by the meeting to order of Mr. Bradford and see ladies of the Frackler.
Hello, Stan.
Hello, guys. Then, Father, we thank you this morning, oh God, we just thank you for allowing us to see another day, and Father, we give your name all honor, praise and glory, and Father, we just ask right now, Lord God, to continue to bless our elected officials, Father, continue to keep them on water court and give them the wisdom to guide your people, Father, we pray for this county, we pray for the city, we pray for the state, and we pray for this country, God, and Father, we just ask right now, Lord God, you look out for our teachers, our first responders, our students, our nurses and our doctors, as we battle through this pandemic, and Father, God, just keep them safe, and Father, we just pray, oh God, that the weather that is coming through this way, oh God, Father, just continue to protect us and all the residents here in this state, oh God, and Father, we just claim it right now, Father, in the name of Jesus, God, in Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Voice flag. Flag to the US, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic with which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Need a motion to approve the dockets. Motion by supervisor Wilson, take it, second. Second by supervisor Hutchins, any discussion?
This, uh, President, I'm gonna vote to this, but again, I have a problem with what's going on with our water bill in jail. Two thousand two hundred and eighty-nine hours. We need to conduct the day yet, do something, man. But having a bill like that, your water gotta be running all, all the time. Thank you.
All in favor? All opposed? Eyes out. Next, we'll move to county business, I'm gonna let Mr. Bradford go first, as you know, we have some weather coming in tomorrow, he's got a meeting scheduled for eleven, so we're gonna have to wait.
Hey, good morning, board, uh, first of all, uh, like two, President Miller said, we got some weather before we come in tomorrow, uh, right now, uh, our timing, they're looking at in the morning, with some radar indicates tomorrow evening, uh, so with that being said, we have a meeting, uh, with the weather service at ten o'clock then, we have another ELC meeting at eleven o'clock, uh, to come over continuously, please. Where we're looking now, uh, we probably come back to the board, ask the board, um, if we possibly depend on what time the weather's supposed to be here, we'll do a delay, a request a delayed opening for all county businesses, or if in the afternoon we'll do, uh, up until twelve o'clock, we'll try to recommend that to the board, whatever the recommendation is of the group, that we'll bring back to the county board, also pretend to the city.
Yeah, if the board's not open, you know, just tell me, Angie, she can declare the administrative.
Right, I'll just, I'll just give y'all a heads up on, yeah, what we gonna do, uh, also with that, I wanna ask the board, let's go and do a proclamation, uh, for the, uh, stores that's coming this way, in the event we have anything, we can go ahead and start, if we have to do any life saving on private property, we'll be able to do that, so I got President Miller, he had the proclamation.
You heard the question? And motion by supervisor Hutchins, second by supervisor Gaines, yeah, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed, eyes out.
Okay, yeah, and with that, like I said, we have a safe room open for any, uh, any individuals that wanna get out from the store on that, uh, second, I just wanna make some clarification, I know we talking about the E nine-one-one, those cell phone fees, I, I need to get some information back to supervisor, uh, Ricky Gray, uh, on that, I had a back with, the county gets seventy percent and the state gets thirty percent, so I had a back on that, give some clarification on that. Yeah, so, and I think Scott, we did look into it, talked about it, so that'd be up to you guys, if you wanna levy those, tell me that.
Didn't the advisory board, didn't we make that recommendation, or something?
Yeah, yeah, the nine-one-one advisory board did make a recommendation that the board supervisors could go out and try to levy, raise our street tax on the cell phones, to try to bring extra income in for nine-one-one. Also, on nine-one's side, uh, we did, nine-one advisory board did vote, the Natchez Police Department wanted to put some new channels on the Miss Win system that the county has, so I'm gonna ask the board, the nine-one-one advisory board did vote to approve that, so I'm gonna get the approval from the board this morning, oh.
Got motion by supervisor Gaines, take it, second. Second by supervisor Hutchins, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Because that's the spread of opinion, of course, on the board.
Well, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Bradford. This morning, I wanna look at doing the, getting that rate, so we can try to get those money in. Back before, when you and I just started on the board, we were taking, we, and we were, had lost revenue for a long time, but it's been steadily decreasing, so this is something that was, been around for a while, that this law's finally caught up to what people actually use, so.
How's it good, thought you'd have that back in, that, uh, increase?
At one point, we were using it to actually pay for all the radio equipment, and that was even more getting that much, so.
Well, I, I was against it last, uh, we met, because, I remember a flip, and I was trying to figure out what was happening, and we still didn't get an answer on where the rest of that money is, goes to state, you know, they got a pile of money, they're not gonna use it, but if we're gonna get seventy cents on a dollar and not thirty cents on a dollar, then, then I'm for it, and I'll, I'll make a motion to increase it to a dollar.
Motion by supervisor Wilson, second by supervisor Hutchins, any discussion?
Yeah, and I'll, and I'll go make sure that there's nothing else we need to do, have like a public hearing or whatever, make sure we can make, take effect and all that, I'll think so, but I'll confirm with that, y'all.
Only question I have is, uh, when we, uh, get the increase, uh, I think we need to break down, really, what did my, who can spend for, so there won't be no confusion, so if we getting seventy percent, and me as one supervisor, I need to know exactly, uh, how we gonna spend that money.
They don't directly into the general funds, right, so if you.
Goes for emergency management, now, we're already using money out of our, as of any year, supplementing E nine-one-one from the general fund, so the idea would be that you offset some of your costs out of your general fund, but there's also things that this board and the advisory board have wanted nine-one-one to do, issues that they had, that they wanted to address, so a combination of offsetting your expenses and, you know, addressing some of their problems.
Yeah. But, uh, only thing I'm seeing.
It can be used for emergency purposes, right, for, for emergency radio purposes or nine-one-one purposes, y'all are the ultimate say-so of how that money is worked, it's a county fund, it can't be put into the general fund to be used for, you know, board of attorney fees, but, uh, emergency nine-one-one stuff is what it can be used for, y'all are the ultimate say-so on it, and it can be any number of things when you're building a budget and doing things, one of the things may be paying for things that right now we're using out of the general fund for that, and using that general fund money for other things for the county, so we're no longer supplementing it, it's nine-one-one's paying for itself, and that was the intention of, was that you'd have a nine-one-one to pay for itself with that tax.
Well, uh, I understand what you're saying, but at the end of the day, to, uh, make everybody happy, to, uh, the advisory board and this board, we need to have a clear understanding at the beginning, whether advisory board, one thing, this money is being, uh, we increasing for a dollar for one thing, and then we sitting over here thinking we gonna do something else, so if we can just get the president or whoever else in you to meet with them, and all of us come together and be on the same page of exactly what we gonna do with this money.
Sure, I'm happy to meet with advisory board, they called me, what, Thursday, I raced down there to do it, so, you know, happy to do all that, and, but ultimately discretion, Ricky, I'm not saying whatever, that's up to y'all, whichever side.
Well, at that same.
And I wouldn't presume to say whichever.
Do you have anything you wanna say, too?
Well, I mean, the, the board voted on it last week, just as a way of showing that we supported and agreed with us pursuing this, because what's happening right now, when nine-one-one was originally created, all those landlines were what people used, and now, nobody has landlines, everybody's using cell phones, this, this regulation actually opens up and allows us to get that revenue off of those cell phones, or voice over IP, uh, type configurations, it's something that's been there forever, or it's been there since, you know, a lot past, we've just not had the need to go after it, and then once we realize that we need it, because we're, you know, well, once again, as Scott's already said, the, the county somewhat has had to start funding nine-one-one, where nine-one-one usually funded itself, so this will kind of true us back up to a point where it's, it's working to, to, to fund itself, and it's requiring less strain on the county, and that, that's why the board voted on it, just so y'all know that we had reviewed it and, and felt like it was the right step to, to take forward, so we just, we did that by way of supporting y'all's decisions. That's, thank you.
Just, just a rough guess, it should bring in between fifteen and twenty thousand dollars a month, they call that, we have twenty-five, three thousand cell phones in this county, probably, give or take.
Yeah, I'm telling you, that fund was a three, four hundred thousand dollar fund, so. All right, nine-one-one, I forget what our last, which comes down here, I hate to speculate, but far seems that, you know, nine-one-one, she's coming.
All in favor? All opposed, eyes out. Next, we'll let Mr. Ford come up, our county engineer, do a bit of.
Good morning, board. Bid opening for your Adams County EWT group project number fifty-two ninety, issue group four, uh, set of projects, include Prince Edition, Quicken Road, West Sugar Land, Liberty Road, South Alstom Road, and Landtown Road. I'll provide everyone with the bid tab, to have, have the construction budget for this project, was estimated at four hundred and eighty-one thousand five hundred and twenty-five dollars.
How that come out, okay?
Four hundred and one thousand five hundred. And so, I'll start opening up the, this, this time, first off, the opening, Camo Construction Incorporated, their certificate of responsibility number is one-two-four-two-three-dash-MC. Their bid bond is with United States Fire Insurance Company. They have the date to be signed. And all of the addendum. The bid proposal is signed by officer of the company, and their bid for this project is five hundred sixty-three thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety cents. Again, that's five hundred sixty-three thousand eight hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety cents. Next, I'll be opening, those are ELC, their certificate of responsibility number is one-five-six-seven-zero-MC. Again, that's certificate of responsibility number is one-five-six-seven-zero-MC. They have an all of the addendum. They have the date to sign and duplicate it. Their bid bond is with North America, North American Specialty Insurance Company, again, that's North American Specialty Insurance Company. Their proposal is signed by officer of the company, and their bid for this project is nine hundred and fifty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars.
Did that again?
Nine hundred and fifty-one thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars. Next, I will be opening up the bid for G Rayborn Contracting, ELC, their certificate of responsibility number is two hundred and twenty-five-two-two-five-four-seven-dash-MC. Again, that's two-two-five-four-seven-dash-EC. And all of the addendum. After date is assigned and duplicated. And their bid bond is with Granite RE Incorporated, that's Granite RE Incorporated. Their bid proposal is signed by officer of their company, and their bid is eight hundred forty-seven thousand two hundred and thirty dollars. Again, that's eight hundred forty-seven thousand two hundred and thirty dollars.
And what was the name of that company, please?
This is G Rayborn Contracting.
Rayborn.
Rayborn. And last, I'll be opening Hope Enterprise, ELC. Their bid bond is with Atlantic Specialty Insurance Company, again, that's Atlantic Specialty Insurance Company. And all of the addendum. Sorry, that's the certificate of responsibility number for. Oh, two-four-one-nine-eight-dash-MC, that's two-four-one-nine-eight-dash-MC. After date is signed and duplicated, their bid proposal is signed by an officer of the company, and their bid is eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars, again, that's eight hundred and twenty-nine thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars. That's all, that's all, yes, I have, for this project, if you took the bid on the board and allow me to go back and verify the bids, you know, now. Allow me, I'll take it, go back and verify all the bids that came in for the project. You take up the bid on the board, you need a motion? You need a motion, you take up the bid?
Motion by supervisor Gray, second by supervisor Gaines, all in favor? Any discussion, sorry.
My question is, uh, construction cost estimate is one price, and all of these bids are over, uh, the cost, do you think, uh, because of the pandemic, and everything has went up since we got this money, is there a possibility we can go back to them and ask for an increase or something, because everything, the material went up, everything went up, so it's gonna be hard for us to even compete with two or three years ago, uh, estimates on something, and everything went up, so you, do you think we can?
I'm pretty sure there's always a possibility, once I can verify the bid and see who we would prefer to go with, or who you guys would prefer to go with, I can always get a contact motion on the Patterson, explaining the situation, you know, the difference between when this project was first estimated into now, and we appreciate the request of some sort of, of price increase.
All right, thank you, sir. All in favor? All opposed, eyes out.
Appreciate it.
Next on the agenda is Miss Angela James. House.
Good morning, members of the board, I am Angela James, the Adams County CASA Director for this area, um, I advocate for abused children in Adams County U. Court, and the reason I come today is to discuss travel in the budget for CASA, within the last two, almost three years now, CASA would actually, uh, fundraise to raise money in a budget to help with travel, to go and see children, we have children that are placed in different areas in Adams County, they're placed in Jackson, they're placed on the coast, they're placed in Louisiana, they're placed in different areas, because a lot of times, we don't have enough foster homes or relative placements to place children that have been abused or neglected, so with that, wherever those children are, it's my job to go and see them, not only do I go and travel to see children, I advocate for these children in court, sometimes maybe two, three times out of the month, but at the end of each month, the last Monday of each month, we have what we call permanency hearings, and with permanency hearings, I have to make a report to the court in the best interest of those children, sometimes we have children to remain in care for years before actually, um, achieving permanency for them, back in two thousand and nineteen, we did submit, um, a request for travel that was approved by the board of supervisors, um, for conferences, out-of-town travel, hotel meals, uh, mileage, even airplane fare, if that was needed, and parking, we did ask for the amount of seven thousand three hundred and twenty-five dollars, uh, an amount was awarded and given in travel for those out-of-town conferences and travel in the amount of five thousand and something odd dollars, I wa, and it was at that time, it was Joe Murray that approved that along with the board, since then, within the last almost three years, CASA has been unable to fundraise due to COVID and so many other things, we do have friends of CASA, McNamara Bluffs Hotel, uh, and Casino, Natchez Adam School District, Calian Petroleum was one, that actually donated to these children, because CASA is a nonprofit organization, so I am coming again, asking for travel to be placed in the budget for CASA, so I can adequately do my job, I can go to work every day, but if I don't see these children, I'm not doing my job, because I have to make sure that they're safe, the homes that they're in are conducive for their placement, and it's just, I can go to work over there every day, but I just cannot afford to continue to travel and see the children and not be reimbursed for it, I have not received travel since October of last year, I did submit myself and a fiscal officer of youth court, we did submit travel for October and November of last year, and it was denied, and that was just for those last two months, because the funds in that CASA account was depleted at that time, and I didn't understand why, but I'm asking the board to please reconsider to put travel in the budget for Adams County CASA, I am a family court.
Let me say this, I do recall her coming, uh, with that seven thousand and some dollars, um, to get approved, uh, what, it was a couple years ago, or a year ago, so.
This says twenty, yes, it was July twenty-third, twenty-ninth.
All right, we looked at that, uh, travel, and we went back and decided that, uh, how much it would cost for her air flight, I think she had reconferences on it and stuff like that, and we added all of that up, and I think we came up with the amount of five thousand and some dollars, Joe did put that in the budget, we did approve that amount for her to do that, her conference, because I think they was something that was mandated for her to attend. Yes, it's mandated, that's right.
She's a, she's a guardian ad litem, and has to be proceeding by all certain amounts of training each year to maintain her certification, the guardian ad litem is required for all neglect and abuse cases, as well as any other cases that the court may appoint, mostly as neglect and abuse cases, you may have a couple of education neglect, or, or some delinquencies, but most of the time it's for those. So that's required under the youth court provision, when CASA came on board years and years ago, that was not something that was as mandated by the rest of the state, Judge Hudson at the time was pretty big into that legislature, got some funds, got CASA's a private organization and so forth, but since, now it's more regulated and those funds have kind of dried up, and that's when the CASA came before the board and said, we need to help get paid for this, these conferences and things like that.
And so, once that had happened, uh, we did, because I think COVID came up, so she did not attend those conferences, but that money was put in there for her, and, um, when COVID came up, she did not make those conferences, so I think as time went on, the money was taken out, because Angie, I think, uh, the money's not there now, right, am I correct?
Not there, no.
Okay, so the money was taken out because she did not, uh, attend those conferences because of COVID, um, when I talked with her, she did explain to me that CASA does not have any more money, because she did not have any fundraisers, because she couldn't do any fundraisers because of COVID, and so, um, she been traveling to see these kids, so I told her she needed to come back to vote the board and explain that, because when she, when that paper was submitted, there was no explanation, so no one was here to explain that she had to travel to these places.
So, most of her, most of the kids she has her reviewed once every quarter, by law, that'd be once every six months, some of the kids will once every month, depending on situation of, of the parents, and so, before she can have her review, she has to have gone, she's supposed to have gone and, you know, basically been in face-to-face contact with those kids, looked around the house, even when she know, you know, there's no reason to suspect there's any problem with the foster placement law, still requires her to go kind of put her hands on the kids, take a look around, make sure everything is good, so she's required for each of those reviews, most of the time it's once every three months, some of the times it's six months, but in real severe cases, it's, they have a meeting every month that she has to see, and there are some, there's not enough resource families in Adams County for placement, so some of them do go outside of the county.
Children between ages of zero and five, I have to see every month because of their age, um, even around town, in-town travel, I have not even put that on here, and gas prices are very expensive right now, in-town travel, I was just biting that because I know I had to do my job, but when it comes to out-of-town travel, I just can't continue to do that, and even with sending this, um, the travel before the board for October, for November and December, it was, it's just a lot, it was a lot, especially during those months, and I will say, like, my friends of CASA, I go to different things because they support CASA, I am a director of this position, so when you have friends of CASA, and they have programs or whatever they have, and they invite you to that, that's part of my job to go there as well, and I do still have people that support CASA, but it's just not, it's not like it used to be.
Mr. President, uh, I'm gonna say the same thing I said last time. I'm not responsible for what happened before I got here, uh, it was brought up that she was under a grant, then they brought her to the county, now she's a county employee, to my understanding, is that not correct?
Okay.
Here go my problem. Okay, but here go my problem. As one supervisor, I think we need to treat our employees the same. There's no way on earth, no other employee in Adams County had to raise money for travel. Since the county hired her as an employee, she shouldn't have to go out and raise money for travel. That means if she doing that, you treating her different from you treating any other employee. And I don't think we need to be doing it. So if she's an employee and the county hired her to do her job, then she need to be treated just like all the other employees. And I don't care what happened before we got here, she ain't on the grant no more, she's an employee. I travel, I go everywhere, all the conferences. I'm finna go to one in Tulsa. I ain't gotta go out there and raise no money. So an employee, now if she was on a grant, that's something different. But no, she's an employee now, she shouldn't have to go out there and raise no money. That's the way I stand.
I agree on that, she shouldn't have to go out there and raise any money to do that. But when we approve money, maybe we can appropriate the money like the interstate and maybe put it in CASA, because don't CASA pay you for travel? Don't they don't want to pay you for what?
No, yes, we have a, CASA has a board.
Right.
And that board, the president of the board, I would submit my documents to the board for pay when we had funds in that account. That, that has been depleted. If I was being paid by CASA and the board, there's no way I would come to the board supervisors in that slope of money, goodness.
As far as Supervisor Hudson, sorry to interrupt you, appropriate money to CASA, that might be tricky. If she's an employee, the procedure that you do as an employee, your department head requests your travel, if possible, in advance, I know some things is going to be an issue, sometimes there's emergency things with CASA. A lot of times they're like investigative unit on a pre-court whatever. But employees get their department heads, their supervisor comes and requests travel, permission for travel in advance. We approve travel, they're reimbursed. That's how our system works for every other employee. That's a mechanism, because we're not gonna, you know, and I've worked with Angela a long time. I don't know what her travel schedule is and all that. Department head should approve it, request it to this board, this board do it. And that's how every other employee is treated in the county, that's, that's part of her duties. Which I can tell you that travel is going to be part of her duties. She's supposed to go and see each of these kids. If we do away with CASA, do away with having alightum, the only, only other alternative is to have licensed attorneys who are not going to do as careful as a job for the most part, and I hate to say it. Because I am an attorney and I wouldn't do as careful as a job as someone that's primarily just focused on it. It probably not going to be, you know, as good a job or as cheap. So that's your alternative, you gotta have a guardian alightum. You know, treat her like an apartment head or treat her like an employee.
Okay, you said, okay, the board approved $5,000 for her to do her training. Okay, so you say from $5,000 to $7,000 for the training. That's not including the travel. So it's going to take more than, whenever we do a budget amendment, it's going to take more than the $7,000 because the $5,000 is required anyway for the training. So the day to day travel will be something completely separate. So I guess we need to get together and decide just how much the travel is going to be every month because it's going to take that $5,000 for the training that's required, right?
I thought it was $7,000 with her.
Well, it depends on where, where it was, where somebody said.
She's got to be certified as a guardian alightum.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, the budget, you're saying $7,000, but it's going to take more than $7,000.
Let me say this, what happened was when the money was actually sitting there for this travel that I was asking to use, the funds for CASA were depleted. Because I was not going to go to these trainings due to COVID, I was asking to use that money at the time just for the everyday travel that I do. And that was, it was denied. It was denied, and this is actually the budget that was done and the funds that we actually asked for from Judge Brown and the fiscal officer of the court.
So what I'm asking is this, you still have to, even though the training stopped because of COVID, you still have to start that, right?
Yes.
That's what I'm saying, so it's going to require more money, it's going to require the money for the training and the money for the day to day travel. It's going to have to be more than $7,000 to be increased in the budget.
I do have a question.
Okay.
He did say that all travel has to be pre-approved for this board before I do that.
Yes, you submit, I'm presuming that the person that's in charge of you, making a stat is Judge Brown. You provide a travel form to her, to him, he would approve it, comes to the board, travel request, we do them. Every meeting we have travel requests.
Just an example.
On top of that, I'm sorry, Angela, on top of that, this board has to approve a, an amount of money that we're gonna, we're gonna estimate how much it's going to cost us a year for travel. And that money has to be in there before she gets finatted as well. So it's two different issues. Our internal policies is with the department, department head requesting travel, they have a form and so forth. The law requires it to be money in the budget before travel can be done.
I did do an estimate on 2021 travel for that year to see how much it actually averaged out. With just going out of town, with just the out of town travel, I estimated that from 2021 and added that up, and that was $4,760.
You know, basically, we had to, so we kind of got to, she had a question and answer like this. So like Bray said, she's a county employee, that was my argument last time. She's a county employee, so when she travels, just like we travel, everybody at county pay our travels, right?
Yeah.
Right?
It's necessary.
The county pays our travels.
Of course it is.
So when we go and we do her, so you know, we'll have to figure it out. But as we go back and forth and we're just, I'll make the motion that we pay her, her travel, approve her travel that she had, and also by that time that administrator, lawyer, whoever can get together and get with her and see what budget she need and see how we can plug it in. So we'll have it in place and be legal for future times that she needs to travel.
Say that, say that. My supervisor, James, and second by supervisor, Bray, any discussion?
I've got some. Mr. Gray, let the door a little open while I do this thing. Anytime there's a conference, he'd go. It's kind of what you said.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, okay. But first thing, when Corbett asked me, I'm going on this trip or that trip, my question is, isn't mandatory? If it's not, I'm not going. I'm not going to spend the taxpayer's money. And a lot of times I don't have the time. But in, in, in her case, Ms. James' case, if she's got to go to a mandatory conference to keep up her status, then I, then I think that's what she needs to do. But just going out of town, go out of town, not so much. And I, I appreciate what you do for the children.
Can I have one other question? Because I remember, I guess from hearing this, I made the comment that we need to treat CASA, I guess the account, but you still have to have that, because y'all raise money also for, with CASA, for the kids, right?
Yes.
So it can't be ceased because you still have to have, have your fundraisers. Y'all do things, I know you do things, help with Christmas presents and all this whole kind of stuff like that with the fundraising money.
Right now, right now, they're, the Divine Nine is partnering with CASA to raise money for the children. That's not for me.
Right, I understand, what I'm saying is, we can't cease CASA. Because it still has to be there because we still have to have somewhere to put the money for the kids.
Oh, yes, that's, now the board governs that.
Right.
The board governs that money for those children. We have a board that governs that, I don't, I don't do that. So when we do for families, we do clothing, we can help with placement, we can help with housing, electric bills. There's an array of things that you will not believe that CASA does. Meals, families.
If you're seeking reimbursement from CASA, it would probably be better if the board paid those expenses and the county stopped reimbursement from that end, if it's something for your costs, okay?
Say that again?
If you are seeking reimbursement for some of your costs out of that account, it would be better if the county paid whatever that cost is and the county got the reimbursement for it.
Okay, but I'm not seeking that.
I know you're not, but if you, I know in the past, you know, you would get your travel paid for out of CASA in the future instead of her getting reimbursed for that cost or for whatever. I don't know if you have any other cause or what you get from, from, or if there's anything. But if there was a cost you were seeking reimbursement for, it would be better that the county pay that expense and the county got the reimbursement at a budget.
The other costs is.
Because if she's a county employee, she's not supposed to make any additional money because of that employee relationship. That, that's the conflicts of interest type of situation.
Is there another cost?
CASA pays, yes, CASA pays the CASA cell phone bill.
I mean, again.
That, that, let me see, is, in, in, uh, I know we got a motion and a second on the floor. Y'all, COVID hit. We talking about mental health for kids in the after. And somebody got to go see our kids, we sitting here debating about this little old money that could probably save a child's life or whatever things like we. I, I just don't understand. I call for a question.
I say, all in favor?
All right.
All opposed? I say.
Thank you.
Ms. James, can you let us know when you're having fundraisers through Corbett or something? I'd like to know.
I will, and they, we were having a CASA gala that the board fully supported. That was also our money allocated for that. I definitely, you all know, it definitely means a lot to me and I will let you know.
Thank you.
I will. Yes.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, Red Cross.
Thank you, Mr. President and the Board of Supervisors. Good morning. On behalf of the American Red Cross volunteers and staff, we would like to take this opportunity to thank you for your support and service. I am Deborah Davis, Disaster Program Manager for the Southwest Mississippi Chapter of the Alabama Mississippi Region, which covers Adams County. And my role is to work closely with the emergency manager, fire department and other first responders in the event of fires or any weather related disaster. I thank you all for your support and as always, we are always employing and asking for volunteers regardless of what your position in the community could be. At this time, I would like to yield the floor to our executive director and one of our dedicated board members to introduce themselves and to explain their role. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Tamika Smith-Dewitt and I'm the executive director of the Southwest Mississippi Chapter. And my role is to work very closely with the elected officials. So many of you probably have heard from me in the past and I've been working very closely with Scott. And I guess we started having conversations about, I guess, since probably it's last June. So pretty much the entire pandemic, a whole year. And so we wanted to be here today, we're here to thank you for your support and Ricky as well. You've answered all my emails just with a warm heart and a smile for the mission. We came to you over a year ago saying that we were in need of a space. We need a workspace here in the area. And because of your generosity, we now have a workspace at the DHS location, which is off of Franklin, Franklin Street? I'm trying to figure it, gotta get my streets right, yes. With the Department of Human Services. So we're very thankful that not only will the people in Madison County, I mean not Madison County, but Adams County and the surrounding areas will have a place to come to if they need to meet with our caseworkers. We are celebrating March, which is Red Cross Month, and so it's so timely. Usually it seems like every time Red Cross Month comes around, there's always some storm. So I'm sitting here listening today to Brad and Paulie and just talking about all the concerns. And all I can do is say, let's all continue to pray that we don't have any storms especially come across this Southwest Mississippi Chapter. But we could not do our work without you. We walk, operate with about 300 volunteers within the Mississippi area. Obviously, as you've seen over the past, if you watch media reports, we are armed with more than 60,000 volunteers that come to the area. And they're on standby across the country to come and support Mississippi. We're a disaster prone area, so when disaster strikes, we can count on people to be there. But one thing I've heard us all talk about this morning is the pandemic and it has affected us. We are in desperate need of volunteers and also community partners to join us as well. When I speak of our community partners, I'm talking about people who can help us in times of disaster for feeding. And now's the time, now's the time to be prepared. We don't know what's going to happen overnight, we're praying for the best, but we've seen the worst. And so, but as long as we have a plan and we're prepared, we're always ready. So thank you so much for your support. We're excited about our space. And Scott, you've gone over and beyond and just answering those emails. And Ricky, you know, every time I call him, you know, and he's just, you know, he gets back to me in such a timely manner. So I, I just thank you guys so much for believing in the mission. And I know that's why that you do it and we couldn't do our work without you. So if you have any questions for me, feel free to ask.
Well, I just want to say thank you all for all that you all do because I know it's a job. You know, I watched it over the many years and, you know, traveling from place to place to place. And I say, how do you do it? But she's always been, you know, so cordial about saying, you know, it's my job and that, you know, this is what I love. So, you know, I just appreciate you all for all that you all do.
We appreciate you too. And this is, I'll let her introduce herself.
I'm Deborah, but I'm Deborah Collins, and I'm one of the Red Cross board members. And I can echo whatever they said, I can't say it any better. We really appreciate you, your support, and especially the facility that you have provided for us so we can do our work. And we just want to give you guys some Red Cross socks. Just a token of our appreciation. Of course, it doesn't tell how our heart feels. I wish we could give you more, hopefully it's such a token and let you know that we really appreciate your support.
Thank y'all for always being there.
Thank you.
President, this came over from the president, I did communicate with them a lot, but like we always say, communication is everything, you know, free, easy communication with the Red Cross. They did exactly what they needed and what they wanted and I communicated with the rest of the board members and it made it happen. So like Brad said, this area is a area where, I ain't gonna say I can't be blessed because they always say how much bad stuff's going to happen and the Lord allows it to go somewhere else. And, but we do need Red Cross now from them and like everybody else on this board say, I applaud, which.
And I do have something for Scott and Brad, since you guys are pretty much, you made this happen for us. And when I tell you it went all the way to Massachusetts, I mean, the report went all the way to our national headquarters. And so not only are we thinking locally, trust me, our Gail McGovern, our national CEO and my boss who's over in Birmingham area, they're just outdone. So you, you just set the example of what a good partnership looks like. And we feel like it's in every community and every community is doing something special in their own way for the Red Cross. So we wanted to be here today to tell you all thank you.
I do have a proclamation in front of me, I would ask the board to make a motion to proclaim March 2022 as Red Cross. Second by Supervisor James, any discussion? All in favor?
All right.
All opposed? I say.
Yes, and anytime, yes.
And I also would like to, um, thank you so much for the space that you are allowing us to use. And at any time, I, I will pass out a card, my business card, to give me a call because I am on, uh, traveling a lot. But if you please call me and you would like to come by and see how we have, uh, set up the, uh, space that you are allowing us, we just, we'd be so, ever so grateful and thankful. Thank you.
I did have one more request. Is it possible for us to take a quick photo from the back of the room behind you guys so someone can... Awesome, great, thank you. Boots, come right back there.
We'll come up front.
Thank you. All right, three, two, one. One more, three, two, one. Got it.
Uh, one big to east, right?
One big.
Mm-hmm, yeah. We did, now you're building this department, right?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, city government business, you have anything? Uh, parkman reports.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
I'm here to present the, um, two twenty-eight to three twenty-one calls for service for nine oh one. So far we have for the Natchez Police Department, eight hundred ninety-seven calls, the Sheriff's Department, four hundred thirty-seven calls, and the Fire Department, twenty-one calls.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. President.
Yes, sir. I was asked to bring the folks for the, um, brick work. To do the brick work, um...
Yes.
Repairs at the jail, I have four quotes. The first quote that I have is from Green Construction and Woodworking. Their quote is for twelve thousand eight hundred dollars. The second quote that I have is for Wright Construction and his quote is for thirteen thousand seven hundred dollars. The third quote that I have is for Clevering Maestery LLC and his quote is sixteen thousand dollars. And of that sixteen thousand dollars, there's a six thousand dollar mobilization fee upfront. And the last quote that I have is KL Jones Construction and their quote is for twenty-six thousand five hundred and eleven dollars and thirty cents. And all four individuals were exploited by Mr. Williams, our maintenance supervisor, and all given the same scope of work so that they would be able to give us an idea of what their costs would be and that's what they did for that work at the jail.
Did a repair, y'all. You don't have to did a repair, y'all.
Well, I was just, I was just come over and I just wanted to...
I'm sorry, I was giving on you, Francis.
Oh, no, 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 on you, Francis, I was on there, so... Don't try to send me five dollars from...
Yes.
So I just wanted to, um, bring that to you all's attention, give you all a chance to, um, you know, talk about it and let me know what to do. Proceed. Okay. So I can go ahead and proceed with grain construction and woodworking, okay?
Is there money in the sheriff's repair budget or county's budget?
Uh, it is.
And the, it's the maintenance budget.
Ms. Gaines.
Sir.
So, when, when is your last...
My last day is April twenty-ninth.
Oh, you got another one.
Yeah, we gonna dance on the sidewalk.
Okay.
She still got time to train, huh?
Oh, no, now I did turn in, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, I sent over the, to the page the travel card, but I have not got, um, the correct actual procurement card, it's got the travel card. And that was submitted, so it wasn't that bad.
Can you get them all before you leave, Francis?
Oh, I can get them all, but like I said, I haven't got, I received the one for the credit card.
You did email us.
Yeah.
And I did, yeah, I got that one.
That's the last one.
Yeah.
The motion was approved, uh, motion by Supervisor Hudson, can you be second? Same by Supervisor Wilson, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Good morning, board.
Good morning.
Um, I'm here today because I spoke with the road department about getting a new computer. And I went down and evaluated the computers, they were having issues with those. And I'm here today to ask if we can get those computers replaced. Uh, I have three different quotes. Uh, the first one from Howard Technology is for four, for four computers and Microsoft Office was just a software for them to be able to work, is three thousand seven hundred and ninety-six dollars. Uh, the second quote is from SHI and its total is four thousand three hundred and seventy-four dollars and ninety-six cents. And the last one is from CWG, which is four thousand three hundred and thirty-three dollars and eighty-four cents. Now, although, uh, that SHI is a bit higher than a Howard. Uh, my recommendation is for that one, although they have relatively similar specs, this one has the best out of all of them. And I understand that they do a lot of work down there and I wanna make sure they're running as optimal, optimal as possible. So it's in the middle of the, of the three.
I think they have to get a food for that, the money's in the budget. If, if this money in the budget to pay for it, you don't have to get a food for it. So I keep that written and you make the decision.
Okay.
It is in your budget. If you need more money, gotta come out.
All right. All right, thank you very much, and that's all I have for today. If there's anything you need from me? Are you sorry? Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
The, we're open bids on SAP oh one AM.
Who are you?
I am Chris Dixon with the Office of State Air Route Construction. This is our... I wanna welcome you. All right, anyway. Anyway, we're open to bids on SAP oh one AM. The, uh, there were three, there were three proposals on this job, but right now we currently have one bid. Uh, if there was electronic bid, somebody needs to check and make sure that we get it. The estimate, the estimate on this job is one hundred and forty-one thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three and eight cents. One forty-one, nine twenty-three, eight. Okay, Lane Line LLC is the one bidder we have of Flowood, Mississippi. Their certificate of responsibility is seventeen four seven four. The bid bond is with, is with Traveler, Traveler's County Insurance, it is four or five percent of the bid. And... It appears to be in order. The proposal is signed, the non-clusion affidavits are filled out and signed, the EB certification is filled out and signed. And their bid is one hundred and forty-one, six thirty-five, thirty-six. One four one, six thirty-five, thirty-six.
That was all on page six. That was all on one.
Well, I'll let somebody submit a late conference if I can't check.
George, you don't have a bid. Do you think with a...
No, I didn't say that.
No, I'm submitting a...
Well, I don't know. Okay, well, in that case, recommend y'all pick it under a bottle while we go check and everything looks good.
You heard the request.
No, I'm...
Motion by Supervisor Brad, second by Supervisor Wilson, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I say aye.
First thing I have this morning is, uh, I submitted, uh, President Middleton, uh, resignation letter to Assembly of Gaines of thirty-one years, his last, that will be April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two.
You read the request.
April twenty-eighth.
Correct.
You heard the request, Mr. Dollar, can you move? Motion by Supervisor Hudson, second by Supervisor Wilson, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Next thing I had, two full dirt requests, uh, one to forty-one, the other to forty-four, caucus circle. Mr. Middleton, you have both of them.
I do. You heard the request, Mr. Dollar?
Aye.
Motion by Supervisor Hudson, second by Supervisor Wilson, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I say aye.
Did you advertise?
See, I can get permission, but I'm probably gonna do it in-house. I mean, I've been talking and looking and, I mean, somebody that takes that needs to know all the roads and where we at and what's going and careful advance and how, so I'm probably gonna do it in-house, Scott, to be honest. But I will have to advertise, you know, if somebody's position is correct.
Let me ask a question, legal question, because I'm gonna make sure we, we, we doing this right. Uh, even though you don't feel it in-house, that don't mean you like to advertise for the job?
I have to, I mean...
I just wanna be legal.
It's, there's no legal obligation to advertise positions. Typically, the county's, uh, policy is to definitely advertise positions, but it's not legally required to do that.
Well, why, why wouldn't we find the parts?
Well, I thought it was, I thought it was supposed to be...
I can advertise for it.
I thought, I thought you advertised in-house first anyway and then you go on the outside. That's how it's been done, that you advertise in-house.
Yeah, we post it, you know, within the county and we're posting on the website and we go through, we'll advertise.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that'd be the best way to do it.
And then once, once I fill that position, then I'll advertise if I have a base seat in the county, if I have, you know...
You keep on, you wrap that, the first thing they gonna say, yo, oh, hey, you advertised for this, this and all that kind of stuff.
Well, Mr. Dollar, you say you're gonna advertise in-house or you're gonna go on outside. But if you advertise in-house first and you fill the position, you don't have to advertise on the outside. If it's filled in-house.
But I'll have to advertise if I fill the base in-house on the open position.
Right, fill the position, right.
Yes, thank you. Okay, um...
Okay, did y'all make a motion to...
Yes.
Can I give a motion?
Sorry.
Sir.
Motion by Supervisor Hudson, second by Supervisor Wilson, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I say aye.
Sent out email, little update on Bloodwater Bridge, creek stabilization and, uh, Magnolia Bluff, two sites, EWP. The money is available, um, thank you for sending out, Ms. King, you have that paperwork to fill out and get it submitted back, okay? Thank you. I was out March fourteenth for three hours, I had submitted to, uh, Corvette. I had an offer to form, I will be out March twenty-ninth for a full day, I was out three hours on the fourteenth, I'll be out ten hours on the twenty-ninth.
I got these forms, can I give a motion? Motion by Supervisor Wilson, second by Supervisor Wilson, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Can I have a new hire, Ms. Delton, do you have that? Yes. I spoke with her this morning, she, she had everything in order.
The maintenance shop?
Correct, maintenance shop assistant.
Jalen Irving?
Jalen Irving. Correct.
Thirteen dollars an hour, annual rate twenty-seven thousand, forty dollars.
Correct, and he's on six-month probation, be a dollar hour, actually six months.
You heard the request already?
He was here already?
Yes.
You heard the request for a venture?
So...
Motion by Supervisor Gaines, second by Supervisor Wilson, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? I say aye.
You said he's already employed, he's...
No, no, his, his first day would be March twenty-eighth.
He's been here before.
He had...
He resigned and then he coming back, it ain't good enough, he resigned and goes back.
Okay, and then I just got a text from, uh, May saying that, uh, we had our dog in the Tracco Park on, uh, Safield Road, do some equipment there, we got, you know, left it over the weekend, so it's a little battered out. Little guy's here, want to get a report, all of them.
Get your gas, thanks, too.
Well, that, and then like I said, that's where I see fixing start, parking side of road is non-stop.
Come on, Cam.
There you go. But anyhow, that's all I have, unless y'all have anything, uh, I would like to be excused about ten forty if I could to go to that, uh, weather briefing, if y'all have anything for me.
Before you gotta, before you leave, Robert, uh, Mr. President, I just wanna say that, uh, MLK, you know, great improvements that we made on MLK. They look, they look great, forget what happened. When we closed MLK down, where did we divert all the traffic to?
We tore, uh, equipment roads like...
Tore it up to the plumbers, worse than it was when you was grabbing them.
We, uh, we still got some more work, we got EWP at the end of that road, we're fixing to have a bunch of big trucks going in and out so after that, then we need to look at doing something, but, uh, we, we do have a project, you know, on equipment road that's gonna pair it up a lot, but I'm gonna stay till about ten forty if anything's moving over there. Thank y'all.
Thank you. Parkman reports, anybody else? Tell me, yes, sir.
Good morning.
Who's calling, who's calling you telling you where to slide in here?
Uh, history. All these years, I've known it, what time to slide in. Good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, we, we're happy to say that the board as well, doing fine, we're experiencing, uh, another great year down there. We, uh, come down, yips, I guess you could say this one. I do have a text for you guys. Um, would request two things this morning. Need a little help from the road department, equipment-wise, uh, going into the spring.
You got any batteries? You got any batteries?
You just gonna get a report. Too much stolen batteries this weekend.
I got a few.
Right now.
We might could take batteries out of the machines and load them to you for a bit, but we we experienced some of the same things since I'm at the board. Just passes, breaking, you know, doing mysterious things. The other request would be for one or two members of the board. To allow a visitation with myself to have a preliminary discussion for a presentation to both the commissioners and the board supervisors on some concepts. Before we leave, we want to look, so you be advised at what will come to play. That's all I have.
That's all we got to say.
You want to set up a meeting?
Uh, at your convenience.
I'll be, I'll be glad to.
Call and let me know.
Just how?
Yes, sir.
I had told you to. I know you got a copy, you make a copy of this, this infrastructure, you might have to pass. This bad infrastructure.
You want, you want to do it?
Thank you. Stop.
Morning, board, I just have, excuse me, two, two small things. First one was I came last board meeting and we submitted a proposal for five patrol vehicles. There was some discussion amongst the the board and one of the things that was brought up about going to a local bank was we could defer the payment to October first.
Through the next year, when the debt service comes out.
Okay.
Your debt payments the next year.
Okay, so.
You can always like make it under your budget, because it comes in next, next year.
We reached out to Enterprise and they did say that that was possible and that was able to be negotiated. I misunderstood that portion and we told them October first.
That'd be the absolute worst period of time you could possibly want anything due is October to December. Those are terrible times from a cash flow perspective.
So, January then?
February, March, April, where you're like perfect, perfect times.
Okay, they're they're willing to negotiate with us, I guess is where I'm I'm at. So I guess my question to you is, is there a date that you would like us to ask? And they're they're willing to negotiate with us of when the first payment would start?
February, December, February, March, or April, we can figure.
They they are negotiating, so whatever y'all want.
We'll just say April.
Whatever, whatever the board decides, that's what we will take with it. They're just, they're willing to negotiate and like I said, that's my fault. I I thought it was October first, and they sent us the paperwork saying October.
Until.
Yeah, until we get uh, the money, we tight for money.
April.
So, that's what we asked for. They. Just give me a date.
April, April, you'll be in sample?
Alright, I'll I'll have something next board meeting. The only other thing that I have.
Something about.
Yes, ma'am.
I got the invoice, they send it in there saying we didn't pay, they were. Anyway, we paid it. I don't understand how the maintenance order works, because I was thinking that we had a certain amount. You know, I was thinking the maintenance was gonna be the same thing every month, but each invoice is different. So how 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 do we have work?
My understanding, the way the maintenance is, they are controlling the, the what is fixed and how much we spend on the vehicles. I.e. they have to get approval now, any vendor we take it to, they have to get approval from Enterprise to fix the vehicle up to us, and they have to do it below a certain amount of money. If not, we have to take it to another place that will do it under that amount of money. So it's literally just a cost-saving issue. And and they, they organize all the bills, they break it down by vehicles, they break it down by expenses, so on and so forth. So it's, they're regulating the the stuff.
I was just didn't know, I was saying it was like a thing that we pay every month.
What we could do is get Angie in contact with Enterprise and let them talk to each other and figure that out.
That's, that's no problem. And I think, I'm sorry, let me interrupt you. And I think you have access to the the website.
I have access to it, right.
Yeah, basically, what you're talking about, that said thing of is that eight, ten dollars a month.
Six dollars.
Six dollars a month, that's what's said. But what they do is they give us a big discount on the repair, what we were paying, we're not paying now, because we're getting Enterprise nationwide rate that they pay everybody to fix cars. So they, it is saving money.
It's they, I don't know, well, what I'm saying is, it don't look like we got enough money in that budget to take care of it, because I'm looking at like one, one February bill was like five thousand. And then one bill was like ten thousand. We spend ten thousand dollars a month, we don't have enough money in that budget.
But we have, we, I'm sorry. We still have seven, six cars, maybe seven cars with over a hundred and twenty thousand miles on the road. At the transport van, which we've been trying to get for a year now, is we, I know we just dumped a bunch of money into the transport van, but it was front-end work and we had to have it done in order to. As a matter of fact, we even pulled one of the vehicles out of service to help with transports, because the van kept going there.
The new van that we?
No, we didn't get a new van. We still haven't got it, because they, remember last year, they wouldn't deal the van? And this year, we're getting folks on between that and suburb and the transport, because they just, I don't know if they stopped making these things or what, it's just, it's just not there. But the the one that we have, you get a thirty mile an hour wheel, going this and it has so much slack and it's just, it's dangerous, just not just for us, but people were towing it. So that's where, that's where your real money is going until you go to the vehicle. It is.
Are we paying?
We spending more, the number to me. I'm not saying we are, I'm just saying it just look like we are. You know, ten thousand dollars a month for maintenance and then we paying, paying six dollars. I was thinking it was like a flag. I'm not saying it, I just misunderstood.
Didn't we pay for the cat, the down payment on the vehicle and are we paying the?
You did.
Or paying the lease, but we don't have the vehicle?
No, 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 we never bought the transport van.
We never ever got the transport van. You all approved a PO, but the company never made it, appeared it, so we never got it and it's not included.
That's not included in those.
It's not included in anything. Now, and what we can do though, me and you both can get on call roads, assuming you set a time tomorrow.
I just need to understand if I didn't have that.
But I know, I know, I know this last month though, it has been, yeah, the only problem, sure. It has been, a lot of stuff towed up.
One month.
And Ms. King, you'd be able to tell us more about, that was part of the argument for these new vehicles. Last year in maintenance costs, I know the maintenance cost was over a hundred thousand.
It was over a hundred thousand.
For the fleet. And that's why we were trying to roll into newer, newer vehicles, keep the maintenance cost down. Because we have vehicles that patrol them with almost two hundred thousand miles on them.
And that thing is is heavy, it's one of our bigger problems, we have to use, because that's the main thing we have transported. It makes sense.
I just thought we had it, I just.
No, we were wishing we did. We were wishing we had it, sure.
We just have never acquired it.
Yeah, because the manufacturer didn't make fear, they didn't make. Now, I'm gonna tell you, Enterprise did find a used one, but you know, y'all say we can't purchase used vehicles. And that's why we started asking them, can they search for a suburban that we can transport in? Because we, that, it's gonna go down again, I can promise you that, because it's, it's about to die. You know, the transport gas, it's got a lot of miles on it, because it transports a lot of people everywhere.
Okay, so. You decide if February or April?
April.
April, April, okay. Okay. Alright, the only other things I have is we have three employees that were asking for their five percent pay raise. They didn't get it whenever we initially set the uh, the five percent raise. They have to go from sixteen oh one to sixteen eighty one. They've now all been here for six months. And it's Aaron Wesley, Mackenzie Taylor, and Alexis Bass. You should have all three of those.
What do you mean they didn't get?
They they were only here two months, a month and a half, employees, whenever y'all, whenever y'all put in the five percent pay raise.
I thought they only here one day.
Right. They weren't here at the time.
No, no, they were here. But they didn't get it, they didn't get it.
This is what I'm at. So they was employed at the time, we implemented the five percent rate, but they didn't get it.
Correct.
My question was, why didn't they?
They didn't get it, because it was, I don't understand that if you been here less than a year, you couldn't get it.
That's not true.
Yeah, I feel, but that's what, that's what we're coming from.
Yeah, but uh, chicken, chicken, but I think it came up before, uh, that some of those folks, I mean, the sheriff's in here, you know, he in here all the time about something, he gonna come take care of that month. He in here, and when that came up, you can look those employees that was there, hadn't been there, and they didn't get that five percent rate.
But you have, they had to been here one or two days, they should have got that raise, if that raise failed during that time.
They didn't get it though. She checked, but I do have the paperwork, what you think she checked?
She gave her all the names, okay?
Yeah, I have. Arrow Wamp, Akin and Tail, and Alexis Bass.
Wait on the photo.
She, she, she researched. Hey, well, while she's researching that sheriff, I do have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
I I need to know the the progress on those projects, those cameras. Getting asked about those every day, and you see some problems starting to occur again, so need to figure that out.
We'll uh, we'll call and find out, if remember, the, it was ninety days, sixty days, I believe, to the installation date, the time y'all approved it, y'all approved it. So we should be, we're getting right there at that time. We'll make a call to them today and find out.
Yeah.
And I'll give you a call.
I, yeah, please do.
We want them as bad as you all do, because I actually had one of the downtown residents call me last night and send me a video of a guy uh, stealing a Cadillac converter off a car.
Downtown?
Yes, downtown, he had, they heard a song, and they went and checked their ring doorbell, and the guy was stealing the Cadillac converter from a unused vehicle. No, I'm just saying, it, I'm just saying, I use that as a reference, that's why we want them as bad as anybody else does, because that just happened downtown and, and you know, having cameras in our ears would be great too. Because basically what they doing out of town is it's drilling holes in your gas tank and taking your Cadillac converter, now they getting both, so. I do want y'all to know though, while we waiting on that, uh, research that, I do want y'all to know that we have a, we're trying to get back open, get community back active in some things. And one of the things we have coming up on April thirteenth between ten and two, so partnering with the cancer center, the mental hospitals, Trinity, Merritt Health, and several others to do a health and safety fair from ten to two. We're gonna be giving out car seats, doing tests for cancer, wherever else they want to test, while they're on some supplement, so y'all can stop by, it would be great. Uh, that's gonna be at the safe room, April the thirteenth, from ten to two, we're gonna do a health and safety fair. We're partnering with several people, so I'll just put something on that. And we keep going or what?
Yeah.
Keep going? Uh, one thing I I want, I know Scott's going out, but I sent him an email in reference to those, what they call them, heart forms or the Corona money?
Heart.
Heart forms. I would like for Scott to send you all that email to take a look at.
He did.
He did, about the body cams, because um, our body cams are coming up for renewal and the ones they're saying that we have are going to be from now, taken obsolete. And so, really want to kind of look and see if we can use some of those heart forms to to um, upgrade our body cam before it become obsolete. Uh, y'all, y'all did our, you did them five years ago, but you know how technology is. Technology's changed, you know, the tasers, they won't, they won't warrant to them anymore. And so we've been slowly integrating new tasers in. I'm asking since we had that Corona fund and and they said can't use that, if we get the numbers, we'll kind of really look at using some of those funds to to upgrade the ones we haven't got yet. But we've been slowly purchasing each year since they told us they're becoming obsolete. But if we can use some of those funds, that would be great.
So you're asking?
I'm asking, I'm asking, I'm asking you all to look at it, so I can bring a number back on what the, the body cam.
Yeah, I think you go ahead and give us all.
We get a number, anyway, if it's something you need, to bring us a number, should we have? And if something that we need, the board finds a way to pay.
Yeah.
You want to say something on that?
Can? Nope. No, I, whenever we bring you the the bid, the number, we'll explain everything with the new technology.
Yeah.
Alright, so, you want to go back to this, you have a date?
Okay.
Uh, September eighth, for what? September eighth for Bass, and September sixteenth for Table.
Yes, I'm asking for the board to approve that um, that five percent they didn't get.
They were backwards?
No, I'm asking for, they're backwards, I'm asking for.
I just wanted more dates. Uh, what's the deal with the date?
What's the deal?
They got high September, you know, the budget, something's already, September, uh, April, it's already in there.
What are the natural, what, pay period?
Yeah, but they didn't get.
Well, it was already done at that time.
But then, you know, they got five, six, ready, then came in after the fact.
Yeah. I thought they came in after?
Yeah. Let me ask a question, Mr. President. I understand that the corinnia from around, if if we approve a budget, it don't go in effect till October first? And if somebody get hired before October the first, they don't get the rate?
The budget was approved September fifteenth, unless I'm mistaken, that's when we approve all the budgets. So let's say, for practical purposes, the board had a budget in place September one, that's usually about have a good idea of what it is. You would approve the budget with the amount of money based on an estimate of how many employees are getting raises and so forth. You would might approve a budget that didn't include these raises for these individuals.
Just say I got fifty employees that work in my department. And I'm up to speed with forty five of them, but I'm on budget for fifty, but I I I don't have fifty yet. So I hire five more people, so they not gonna, is not in the budget for them to get the raise when, when it's budgeted for fifty people? I'm just asking a question.
Well, it depends on how you did your budget. Did you budget the raises for fifty employees? Or did you just budget raises for forty five employees and leave the existing salary for those remaining five employees? Depending on on how you budgeted.
You talking about eight or six?
I budget, according to, you supposed to have what, seven, eight?
Seven, eight.
Eight employees, I budget that, yeah, for the seven, six, eight.
So.
That's it, second.
Alright, motion by Senator Brown, second by Senator Wilson.
So you budgeted the raises?
I budgeted the count of employees.
Any discussion?
No. I mean.
All in favor? All opposed?
Do we need to increase, amend the budget?
I was gonna need an Q, he said everybody probably was over with, but.
Alright.
So we're gonna have to amend the budget?
We gonna have to amend the budget.
So that, okay?
Not for, not for them that's a raise, but just about to amend the budget.
Is alright.
She didn't have to mount to, to mount it.
There's no way you can tell, they, you know, right now, all the time, they got, so it's gonna have to be adjusted at some point.
The last thing I. The last thing, the last thing I have is, I saw out for an independent inspector who doesn't have a dog in his fight, either way, concerned with jail. And I sent the contract, I turned it slowly, and I'm asking the board for permission to hire this person to come in. and I'm asking board for permission to hire this person to come in and look at the jail from three different aspects. One, liability for us, two, safety of inmates, and three, um, on the other side, how would the community deal with it liability wise, and benefit from it, you know, if we were to replace it? This person is not somebody who builds jails, they're strictly an inspector, so we got some things going on, and I need an independent to look at.
Most of them.
That's why I first, I have that cause.
Uh, I got the contract here, and she did the jail back. We'll sacrifice whatever we need to our budget to get this done, but it's, it's the final fee. Huh?
Okay, I'm listening.
Okay, well, on this contract, according to the contract, the total amount, Scott, you corrected from wrong, her, her hour rate is under seventy-five dollars an hour, but she's saying the max that it would be would be fifty-two.
How much?
Fifty-two, five dollars to fifty-five.
Uh, let me ask a question.
Tell us what we on here, huh?
I want to ask you to say, uh, we, we, we all know we got problems at the jail. We, we trying to find a, 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 a way to fix the problem that we have with a solution, and find a way to get a new jail. We don't need nobody to come in and pay them five thousand dollars to tell us what we already know.
I concern on liability side, because there's things that being impeached mail over there, and, and I sat down and I talked to Johnny, I don't know if he got that in the hallway or not, but he, he brought some concerns to the table, to me, and, and I was definitely concerned as well. We, we gotten a lot of contravention and things of that nature, but my concerns be more than anything, it seems that he saw that he didn't tell nobody. But I told me and him had this talk face to face, and I didn't wanna break this up, but since, since he never gonna break it.
Break it up.
And, and one of the things is, he did, he said it, he said, well, he, well, I'm not gonna say what he said, let me say this.
Know what he said, because I'm just.
No, I'm saying what he said, and now you bring a man present.
Right.
I saying, I don't, I don't want to get into that, because I wouldn't want you to tell me what I said, I'm a present to defend myself. You tell what you need, now, if we need to tell what Johnny said, somebody get Johnny over the phone.
I agree with it a hundred percent, but let me tell you, the concerns that were brought up was, we was asking, because the jail is so outdated, you see how y'all have these nice lights that's flat and flush over there, you know, the lights are down from the ceiling, or these guys can get to them, they don't recognize it. It doesn't matter how many of them you, you, you replace or do something with, they still have access. In normal jails, people don't have access, either ceiling's too high to reach that, or they are looking there, or they can't get to them. These guys though, they are taking the lights down, and it's hard to watch all eighty or nine of them at one time with three people, because they're behind closed doors in those cells, and they can tear the lights down, and they can sit there and try to burn the windows out that you see all around jail right now. That's fearing the mess out of me.
Excuse me, Sheriff, one of the things that this consultant's contract is doing is not whether you need a new facility or not, it's saying, can you take what's existing?
Yes, I'm sorry.
And improve it, or, and doing a cost benefit analysis of building a new facility. The only, and I have no reason to think that there's, you know, ill intentions or nefarious intentions by benchmark. So far, the only person that's done a report of whether you need a new jail is the person that's proposing to build you a new jail. This person has no interest in building you a new jail, they're gonna say, hey, do you want, it, would it make sense to make these rights and fix the existing jail that you want, which would probably be significantly cheaper if it's something that you do to fix the jail?
Thank you for correcting, I'm not Scott.
I'm not telling you to do it or not to do it, but that's the difference of this particular.
President, I hope you find out why they want to be on the.
Well, that's exactly what it is, that's the first thing, why is her water bill going on?
And, and that's one of the things that, that I want to tell y'all, like, it's, you can hear water running in the walls over there, and nobody can find where this water at, or where it's coming from, but you can hear, they go Johnny right there, he can come here right now. They will splash, you can hear the water splashing back and forth, but one of the misperceptions that I don't want the board to be feeling like is that we're allowing the jail to be torn up. We're not allowing anything to be torn up, the guy who tore down the camera the other day, he's gonna get charged. Everything that we can legally charge a person with, we're gonna charge, as a matter of fact, we have some charges coming up that's gonna surprise everybody on some other things that, that you may be aware of. Those charges are coming, I don't want the board to think that I'm just letting, we're just letting the inmates stay at the jail because we want a new facility. If they can fix this one, that's great, I just talked to Mr. Upshaw, and asked him, who did he use over there to get, uh, cameras, I mean, get cages around his lights, and his TVs over there, so that people can't tear them down, but right now, we just stripped them over. We just stripped them over, because they had them on trash cans and hiding stuff in them, but it's, it's not as secure as it should be.
So you didn't have to say Upshaw?
Yes.
Has, perfect, he.
He, yeah, Upshaw got somebody to come in here, and I.
So why can't the shift get somebody?
Well, I, I just talked to Johnny about it and asked for that, I literally just talked to Johnny last week and asked Johnny, yeah, he's right behind me, I asked Johnny, and he, he like, I asked, come on in, Johnny, come on, let's talk. But I, I just asked Johnny last week, and he told me the guy's name, and I called Upshaw, and I got Johnny, and, and I'm asking, I'm asking for the board, but one of the other things I'm asking for the board to do is this, whether we build a new jail or not, we need to get some metal put over those windows, so these guys don't keep doing what they doing, as long as they can access to your light, go ahead, I'm gonna let you talk for it.
And, and when it comes to the windows, we are doing the windows as they destroy the ones, or as they put a hole in the windows. We have metal welded over there. We did check it one time to see about doing all the windows, that one time, I guess it was running around ten thousand at, at that moment, to get that done, I'm pretty sure the price on increased over time and everything, uh, so it's been a while, and so, that's one thing, the TVs, I did talk to the sheriff about the TVs. We do have a cage put around the TVs at juvenile kitchen, uh, that's helping that situation out, but, uh, we had came up with a thing to put around the lights to help with that, because we have a big problem at the jail for the inmates destroying the lights, and, and finding the lights to replace the ones that they're, because they're so old. Uh, we, I had a two dollar a week up today with Sheriff, a lot of the thing going on that I respect for him. Most of it is dealing with a safety issue, but a lot of it is dealing with things that can be corrected through the employees doing better job also. And I don't mind saying anybody didn't, you know, I told him that the jail is doing a deep, a better job, I was calling him, they do a sale, check, he said, they are, they got these, what you call it, push button?
You gotta bang.
They go to each block, but that's not going in the sale block. When we going there to fix one thing, I'm looking at finding wire tanning and other sales block that we didn't even, we weren't even informed about, so I ended up spending a half a day on things that I didn't even know about, that are getting broken and torn up on a day to day, over and over and over, you know? So, I mean, it's a lot that can be corrected, and it ain't dealing with the jail, it's dealing with the employees doing a better job. We going there to do some work, instead of the jailers standing outside the door with the keys like it's supposed to, they going in the block with us, having a conversation with the inmates. You know what I mean, I got inmates threatening my man, my work, you know? They had a jailer had to get between Sydney and an inmate, they wanted to jump him, so they'll not start raising hell, because I can't send him in there to work, you know, his life is at stake, you know? So it's a lot of deals can be both ways, you know, some of it is the jail, because the things are so hard to get to two feet. Things that I go here and fix in fifteen minutes, might take two hours, fifteen minutes, because of the way the jail is made and stuff.
I, I, Mr. President, I understand the weather situation, I understand a light situation, but I can't understand why they destroy a TV, because once you destroy a TV, you would not get another one.
Exactly.
You will, you won't, you won't watch TV no more.
Well, I mean, to me, that's, they get to the wiring on the TV, they strip the wiring, so they can light what they wanna light, so they can smoke.
Okay, we not replacing the TV.
No, we not, we're not replacing the TV, but we constantly have to work on the wiring. We tape them up, we put wire nuts on them.
So, so if, 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 if a TV somewhere, and they doing it to the TV, why would we repair a TV when they destroying something that they got to watch, then they don't need to be watching?
It ain't the TV that we repairing, but let me say this though, everything Johnny just brought to you all, I asked him one question, because I wanna be fair and be transparent to everybody, has it been reported? None of that stuff had been reported, and so that's what bothered me right there, because if my staff doing wrong, I promise you, anybody who knows me know I don't have a problem dealing with staff. I'm straight up, and if I need to can you, I will, and if I need to charge you, I most certainly would do that if the law allows that. But some of that stuff that he's speaking of, some of those sales, the locks don't work on, some of them he got chains on up there to keep closed. We can lock down a whole block on certain blocks and go back up there, and they gonna be right back out because the door locks are not working, or they jamming them, or something of that nature. When you dealing with eighty-some people, and you only have four people on, or three people on, that's hard to go in every, every cell, every minute, and one thing we asked him to do is when you go up there, let us know ahead of time, so we can lock everybody down, so it won't be no more confrontation, so after he brought the Sydney incident, that's one of the main things, actually, it was in place before that, I just didn't realize, but now, I made it real clear, anytime maintenance go anywhere up in the jail, everybody is to be locked down, we not gonna have them threatening him, and we not gonna have them threatening Sydney, or anybody else. But you get what you paid for, and, and that's where it's at. If we can fix all those problems with the jail, I promise you, I don't have no issue with it, but he can see him testify to what he want when it comes to those lights. I just feel like, as long as them, those type of lights in there, you gonna forever have inmates stand down, because they access them so easy.
That's true, the ceiling isn't but eight feet.
Eight feet.
And the light is similar to these, that it can burst and get to, but the thing about it to me is, they still, jailers need to make it rounds, not just come up there and hit a button, but somebody stay at the door, and the other jailer go in and search cells, looking there, right there, what's going on, or when you get to lock them down at night, you do the same thing. One jail outside the door, the other go in and shake the door to make sure, you got inmate jamming locks, putting cars, playing cards, jamming the locks. The jailers think they locked, because all they do is go up there and turn the button, keep on to the next, you gotta take time and do it the right way. Definitely inmates coming out and walk around at night, we had a sale that we came in, wired a thing, I said, until I get a new light, make sure we put a note on the button when you turn, you not open the sale, also put a note down at control room, come back the next day, the sale wide open. They still, the jailers still do what inmates say. And, and I told the sheriff and everything, I am, I'm not gonna lie to you, I think it's the worst I have seen in seventeen years, and everything. I mean, the inmates seem like they do what they want, the other day, I came to work, and they had a picture where the inmates threw a, a delight, but, for rest of life, I could see it on, in the federal hallway, you know, I go in there, the TV there on the ground, on the, on the trash can, but it pulled me up on the stand. You, you go in there and tell them that you gonna put it on the, on the, on the stands, you got to fuss with, you got to fight with. I had one other day grabbed a pipe, we got a shower with PVC rod, PVC pipe, with a shower curtain on. He grabbed his pipe, if you take that sensor cord, I'm gonna do this and do this, I mean, he gonna have a few words, and everything, and he started laughing, and put it down. But this is stuff you go through with, until it's consequences for their action, but you gonna have that problem.
Let me ask you this question, are they being put on lockdown from any, since solitary?
Let me say this, we trying to lock them down, but if the sale don't work, where you gonna lock them?
Yeah, but the other thing, but, but. Same thing is, if they tacking up the locks all the time, if they jamming up the locks, burning them up, I mean, that's money spent, I'm up to the point, right now, it frustrates me so, maybe else, the money is spent out of sheriff department budget, maybe they're holding jailers more responsible, up to a point, that they would stop doing it, because everything come out of my new budget, for everything. Nobody care about nothing, long as we keep on fixing it and spending money, it just seem like a, a low paying, thriving door.
That, you saying that, but let's just be real though, this goes back to the whole point, everything you told me, you said yourself that you didn't report it to anybody, you shouldn't be dealing with inmates anyway, if that's a problem, our commanders and everybody have told you, come to them, but you went up there by yourself again the other day, so if you gonna do that, come to us.
What I'm, I'm.
Just, we sitting up there in the meeting with.
I didn't go up there, my.
Master Sergeant Russell told you, she say Johnny, we told you not to go up there, we wanna lock the inmates down, she confronted you about that.
On the spot?
And you said you went up there anyway.
That was, no, we had, we had a jail officer.
How they lock them everybody down now when you go up there?
I don't know, because I haven't been up there.
Alright, let's stop.
Mr. President?
Yeah.
Uh, I, I'm not, I'm not in the jail, but one thing, I, I'm listening, uh, Johnny, for your safety, please don't go up there.
Yes.
Unless, uh, uh, for your safety and the safety of your employees, don't take nobody for granted, I don't care how well you know them, do not, you know, please don't do that, let them know, because if you don't, anything might happen, I tell you.
That's true.
Yeah, we need you, man.
We had a, that, that, we went into a block, doing some work. The guy, it's just a light that we noticed while we was in there, the guy said, he numbered on my light, the light was pulling halfway down. When we went to work on this light and everything, the guy went to tell me, oh, oh, you gonna fix my light, you gonna do this, you gonna do this. I tell you, you don't tell me what to do, or whatever, as a matter of fact, said, get yourself and come on and go out to sale.
Well.
You know, and, and, we, we not gonna work, we, we, we didn't.
No, 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 make sure that you have the right people with you when you go inside the sale, please do that.
We, we all get a job.
Nah, I ain't talking about no jail, I, I ain't talking about no jail, I ain't running no jail, but I don't want no jailer going inside the jail with me with other inmates.
He, he not supposed to.
You take whoever they say you need with you, it, it, it clear you, whoever they say you need to take, that's who you need to take.
And what we've implemented is, before maintenance come up there, let us know, and we gonna make sure everybody locked down. So wherever area they gotta go in, they don't have to have contact with anybody, that's what we prefer.
No inmate is gonna be in that sale that they go in.
If he's in there working, or Sydney is in there working, that's, that's the order that has been given. We don't want him hurt or nobody else.
We can, we can do it in every block. To Johnny's defense, I understand probably what happens, he gets in there, he sees stuff, he's got a lot to do, and he's just trying to knock stuff out, but for your sake.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we can do it in every block except one, and that's an open block, that you can't put an inmate behind a closed door. It's an open block, you go in there and you work, and that's the one that we don't have any lights working in there, because they tear them all up. That's the one that they threw the bugs out against that other jailer well, it's just one block that you cannot lock them down, and the rest of them you can.
So, my question is, we, we got to fix the problem.
Yes.
You understand what I'm saying, because we just back and forth, this time I don't even feel like the back and forth, but anyway, the lights, you saying that we can get, do the same thing that we did at the detention center?
We didn't do that, we didn't do the lights, we just only did the TVs that you got.
You did the TVs, so can you get that done?
Uh, we got the name and everything, uh, the guy that did it, I think they said something like, they got a date, they got a date or something.
What about the windows, okay, they keep breaking the windows or what? Is it something we can do, is it anything that we can do?
To prevent, to prevent the windows.
Because we keep spending money fixing the same thing, what can we do?
If, if you want me to get another price.
Right.
On getting, somebody come in as well and put metal over every window, so they won't be able to do it.
That's what I want you to do.
You know, we could, that could take care of that part.
Okay.
With the lights, I got a book, correctional book or whatever, but I can't fly, find the lights that up there, I might even go to another type of light, but that's not gonna stop them.
From breaking them.
That's right.
It's nothing you can.
That's what we try, that's what we trying to come up with, can we put some kind of cage around the lights?
Because we don't have to.
You gonna have to, that's the only way you gonna stop them tearing it out.
That's what I'm saying, that's, that's the problem, let us think.
Thing about it, that's what I'm saying, you gotta come up with something, because we, we can put something up there, and that don't mean that they can't snatch it down also, the cage down.
So what they doing over there?
We, we don't have a problem with it.
The ceiling, the ceiling is higher and farther, the ceiling is way higher, you can't get to it over there.
Yeah, if I can't.
About eight feet.
Alright, I'm, I'm, I'm convinced, because we gonna go on, I'm convinced that we need to bring whoever in and do whatever they got to do to figure out how we can improve, what they gotta automate them up, so.
Yeah, motion move forward, can we get a second?
Second.
Second, also, brother, project is in discussion.
Discussion.
I'll go and move to try to get these prices, to try to get that done.
I understand.
Can I, and, and what you doing, you know, lights is one thing, but you said locks another, that's a whole nother, uh, thing. That need to be rectified also, if you can't lock people down, don't just get an estimate on fixing lights, you definitely need to get a, a, uh, estimate on making sure those jail doors lock.
Like I said, we can do that, but the thing about it, they have to, even when they working, they have to check them, because they jamming.
Well, I understand about the jail. Well, I understand about the jamming, but I heard you say, I heard him say, you got chains around a door.
We got chains, we got chains around them. They still work. They got chain around them because of the fact that the jailer come in there and open it up even though you put a note that say you're not open. They work. But when they can tell the jailer, open up, say, or whatever, whatever, the jail, the jail open them up, that's when we got a problem. That's why we got a chain around.
So, carry the motion please, uh, all the way, all the way.
So let me be, before, before we go away from here, let me be clear. All the locks working in the jail?
No. We talking, we talking about what the chain that on the, uh.
Other than the chain?
Yeah, yeah.
All, all locks working?
No.
Can we get that in there?
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
They not working.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have anything else. I do wanna say I appreciate you all addressing this issue this morning. Thank you, Mr. King. Thank you, the board. It's hard to work, we don't have the stuff to deal with. So I appreciate y'all taking this concern seriously and addressing it so we can get this done.
That's what we want.
Thank you.
Alright, any more departmental reports?
Let me get a couple things out, out of the way. Um, we have a request from C-Spire to put a splice at twenty-six turn, uh, Pickford, uh, Parkway. Um, it's just a splice, they wanna do some installation of some conduit along their driveway.
You heard the request? And supervisor Danny saying, supervisor Wilson, you just got, all the way?
Nah, all the way.
Alright.
And now we get to the bid opening we had today. Uh, we're gonna start with the SAP whole one, eight and a whole M. Um, we went back and we verified the bid for lane line with one hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty-six cents. Uh, it's our recommendation, recommendation that we award, that contract the lane line, uh, in that amount for their contract. In addition to that, you know, the part of that project was participating and non-participating account will be responsible for a portion of it. The counted portion of it with, uh, contingency and engineering fees included will be fifty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars. And the state aid fund that will be associated in the same amount with the contingency and the engineering cost will be one hundred and eight thousand, nine hundred dollars. So the total fund for this project will equal to one sixty-five, seven hundred, once you add those two numbers together. And fifty-six thousand, eight hundred eleven will be, be the responsibility of the county.
One sixty thousand?
One sixty-five, seven hundred with engineering fees and contingency is the total fund for the project. And the counted portion of that will be fifty-six thousand, eight hundred dollars.
So.
Most of my supervisor Danny, you say?
Second.
Take my supervisor Hunter, it's all, uh, you can discuss. All the way? All the way, I said.
Well, I should do this, um, so I just get board authorization, get the board president to sign a board order so I can get the state aid.
How soon do we be bidding it out? I mean, it did it out, how soon? Do you think that, uh, with, with, well, to commit, uh, how long before they could possibly start that project?
You, you have the bonding and the contract, which takes about thirty days.
Okay.
And so I go and get the president to sign this so we can go ahead and do the rest.
Okay.
Alright, the second one was the EWP report, went back and verified the bid. Camo constru- camo construction was still below bidder at five hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety cents. I reached out to Mr. Patterson, who's the representative of NRCS. And he said that, um, said we had the number of bids that we had, that we can submit a fund increase to re- to get to this low bidder amount. And just submit it to him. And, uh, we shouldn't have the issue of getting this, getting a fund that probably, for a fund that probably increased to that amount. So, I can wait until we get that official funding letter to actually award the contract. Or we could do a contingent on.
Yeah, yeah. And then also. Alright, I think the motion, alright, the motion is by who?
Yeah.
Supervisor Wilson second, by supervisor Danny, and that motion is pending. So I want some motion? All in favor?
Uh.
All opposed? I said.
I won't say anything to, to the contractor until I get the approval. Um, and that, that's pretty much, any questions for me?
What's the timeframe of that?
I, I don't know, I'm gonna submit it to him today. I'm gonna go back to the.
Is that the contractor up there?
Yeah. We're working with them on the project.
President, I have a question. Um, how are we looking on the, uh, other applications for striking on the other goals?
We submitted that to state aid, so we just waiting on their approval.
Okay.
Yes, and once we get approval of that, then we'll start the design, with the same way we did with the strike.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
And I know that to the twenty-two, the two thousand twenty-two raise grant application, we did submit a preliminary. I know I said I wouldn't meet the deadline, but I ended up meeting it, submitting a preliminary draft to, just to tell them to submit to, uh, I guess the DOT.
Okay, that was gonna be in my report because I talked to attorney slower about that raise grant. Cause I see where the railroad is also wanting to submit an application for that raise grant, so you're probably submit the application. So maybe we can use that on the railroad. And then we do some projects out last, um, that we was looking at, supervisor Gaines and myself was saying something about the roads, but I see that the railroad wants.
And if I'm not mistaken, the railroad is actually just asking for our blessings, it won't affect the rest of the rats. Well, we look, if I'm not correct.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, it's, it's two different, it's two different aspects, so we are just be like giving them blessings out, uh, doing that.
Yeah, now, they still need to, they're, they're coming in next week, maybe this week, on the twenty-third, is that next week?
This, this week.
They need to meet with some of us and tell us what this, what the, what they're.
Uh, what they need to do, they need to come and hold it forward like everybody else coming for this.
And I need with.
That's what they need to do.
Well, I mean.
I don't know who the railroad is. So if something they got going on that important, they need to come and hold it forward.
That would be, huh? I really do think that it got a legitimate, uh, point, and, and reason being is this. We, you can't discuss a whole lot of business among supervisors. We are not trying to get in a, uh, constitute an illegal meeting. So when people have things like that and wanna come, our board members wanna know. And our board members should have the access to know without one or two board members knowing something. And then the other board member here in the street or something, it'll be good when we have, uh, folks and organizations growing stuff, done. They need to come and for all five supervisors so we can hear that one time in our public meeting. And that way you won't get this supervisor here, that supervisor there, and may as well get this supervisor to keep us all on track.
I, I totally understand that, and that's, that's been the, the board, but, for instance, like Red Cross, before we even got something started. You know, and got approved by the entire board. You know, you have a talk with Angie Scott, the president, whatever, just to say, what are we talking about here? It's something totally out of the, something just out of the woodwork or something illegal, we're gonna shut it down immediately. If it's something we're interested in, then we invite them to the board meeting like that. So that, that's, that's why I said, if they come into town anyway, they can just say, hey, what is this? So then we can put them down on the agenda, it's something that the board will leave.
We gotta be blind, to go back to the board and start following up. Uh, be able to investigate some things, or look up some things that he may need to look up before they come presenting to the whole board.
Is there anything else we got to talk about here? I appreciate your time. Glad you served us, man.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any more, uh, departmental reports, Grant, you have something?
Yes, I do. Really, the only thing I do have is, I've got invoices from JKS on the MLK seven, eight, and nine. This will be the CEI portion of that project. Our invoice is, um, sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty and eighty cents. Which was eight percent of the, uh, construction costs. To that project.
Sixty-seven thousand or what?
One hundred and thirty and eighty cents. You heard the request?
Say that again.
The sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty.
Wasn't they planned?
Was it for a brick?
Was for the CEI on MLK seven, eight, and nine. Which is eight percent of the total, uh, construction cost. That was the second project that, uh, that Midway Construction had done there. And, uh.
That we paid on it.
Paying the grant, but not the, not the, uh, CEI. We paid, paid the design, and then, uh, this is the CEI portion of that.
Oh, man, I know.
You know, I'm back again.
I don't know if we paid it or not, that would have been. If you're wrong, we're either. Why don't we, I mean, just the way the, way the mechanism works, we're not approving their payment, it still has to be doctored, that's plain. We didn't, we know that that work was done, that job was completed unless I'm, unless I'm wrong. So by the time it gets doctored, and, and doctored, he checks us anyway if we've already paid that, that estimate. That, we can go back and check and see if we paid. That makes sense? We're not, they're not getting cash money if we make this approval. We'll go back and check and, and if they'll still submit the document, we'll check to see if it's not double paid. Wish they do, they, for that. Supposedly, so now they call me about double payments sometimes.
You heard the request?
So.
Much more supervisor, much more supervisor, great, you in discussion? All the way? Alright. All opposed, the whole opposed. I said.
Have a question, Brett.
Yes.
Where are we at, where are y'all at on State Park Road? Man, what, what's the, I, I know, uh, many guys run out there, and I roll out there, so it's, it's a holdup somewhere out there. Out there, what, what, where we here up there, where we at with the contractors, or where we at with y'all?
Um, uh, they were, they were working on drainage there, uh.
They said, they have sand still, I mean, I've been there for the last two or three weeks, the same, uh, pipe laying right on the side, right here, nothing has moved. I mean, everything is the same. I've been checking it every week, so I'm trying to figure out where is it? Because I'm getting called from the residents. I mean, would you know, cuz I get my butt laid up, so I need to publicly let them know. That I'm on, that I'm asking the engineer, that they just ate me up, and I need an answer for those folks. So they can go on YouTube and see that the supervisor is asking the engineer for to get this stuff straight and the project, where we at.
Take that, Raven, we got their voice, some pickup from JKS to help, uh, complete that project. He said that they, since, since we had a meeting, there was some stuff that's been done.
Is that, is that the meaning, y'all, they had up in here?
Yes, sir.
So, I was just trying to see where they, where they were. Now, where you at, from your standpoint, Brett, where, where y'all at?
Uh, let's see, there was a, uh, I think y'all got a monthly report. On that project, but they, they didn't, the last month, there was no, I mean, no pay estimate.
Yeah.
On that, I mean, I know that they, it's been wet out there, what, what they're trying to do. They've been dealing with wet soils, and they're, they're trying to put in their, their drainage or piping there. And they have not done much out.
Well, it's, alright.
It's been, they've talked to the, uh, bonding company on that, they, they've been contacted.
So, well, are y'all, are y'all straight on the design phase, so they're not waiting on nothing from y'all, other word? So, when I go back and talk to Raven, you know what I'm saying? Because I'm trying to get some answers for these folks. When you calling me, I'm trying to get an answer, and a legitimate answer. So when I go back to the folks, and I, when I go to the contractor, so the engineer's got everything and all that they need, right?
Yes.
Okay, so now I can deal with the contractor, I appreciate it.
They're, they're not waiting on you on anything?
No, we got, I mean, we got some layout to do, but they're, they're not at that point right now.
Man, let me say, I wasn't there to meet, but. I'm just gonna say, like I said, man, e- everybody need to get on the same page, man, cuz, cuz. One person saying, if, if this is the holdup, the other person saying, this is the holdup, not we in a meeting that, don't nobody know who the holdup is. And you ain't gonna get nothing done out there. I'm just gonna tell you right now, you ain't gonna get nothing done. Because they should have been in the meeting, and that shit, once that meeting, y'all, we got over with the meeting, everybody would know who is the holdup. And would have been on the whole pump and finger say, well, the engineer the holdup, or the contractor the holdup. You ain't getting nothing done out there.
Alright.
And that's, that's all I have, if y'all have any questions, I'll be the other.
Alright. Public comments? Anything on maintenance property?
Got that one on two south board drive, and did we ever check that similar, that's one oh two, that right there says, one oh two or one oh four?
We've got something coming up, and we're working on the Secretary of State on that one.
I'll be sure. You be waiting on your report.
Alright, go for the table.
Now, now, if you want a tour down there, you can go ahead and stop, you try.
I'm saying, I need to get an estimate as to cost. Last time we went down there, it wasn't quite done. Wasn't quite, you know, where we wanted it to be.
Well, I'm gonna correct you on that. It still look like a third world country, cuz I went down there too.
That's probably a better way of seeing it.
Yeah, and so ain't no place wasn't done. If that's what they gonna do to evade the problem, then ain't doing nothing.
We're gonna send an estimate of cost over to the Secretary of State and work with them to get it, get cleaned up. And whether that ends up being owned by a county or however.
So let me ask you a question now, how long it gonna take?
They get an estimate of cost, or you get cleaned, from the Secretary of State, it didn't seem, seem like they take very long, they just need an estimate of cost.
I understand what you're saying, I'm getting calls every day, I'm almost scared to ride down this street. That's just how bad it is. Once you get to the end of the street, you don't even know if you gonna make a U-turn and come back. It's just that bad down there. South view off of Crown view. They got all kinds of stuff going down there. Everybody down there crying for help. So they say they got drugs down there, they got everything down there, ain't nobody doing nothing about it. I'm just being honest with you, cuz when them people come crying to me, I'm telling it all, cuz it ain't gonna be on really great. Now, it look like a third world country down there, they say they got drugs down there. Then, my next move, next board meeting, gonna be to call three on my side, let them go in there and figure it out, cuz this gonna be all really great. I'm just letting you know. You on my report, huh?
Yes, yes.
I ain't mean to do that, but, Mr. President, right down there.
I've been down there.
You still, supervisor Willis Hutch, he done been down there, right down there.
I've been there.
Uh, I talked to the, uh, he was my boy, and I was at the LSU game, hooting and hollering, and I ain't got no voice. Uh, I met with the city recreation director and asked her the name of the person that came down and either assessed on their parts. And, uh, I set up for him to come down to look, if I knew, if I know, he could have Googled Earth all this. I wouldn't even come, cuz he can, he gonna Google Earth, your part, your part, your part. And he went to, uh, Brahma and paying out. He said he can Google Earth, put something on paper, you can take away from it, you can add to it, whatever the case may be. I thought that was a good idea. Uh, he gonna say, well, you might need this, this, and this. Now, once you get the plan, you can say, I don't want this, and I don't want this. You go in there and see what you do most, and he can add that to it. So that, that's what.
Okay, I think, is that the same man that, I think I talked to, he came in here one day and I talked to him, I brought him over here, and he's supposed to run out and look at all of the parts. I thought he had gone ready, gone out, looked at all the parts. He was with, he was the same over at the city too, but.
What's the timeframe on that, supervisor?
That would be good.
Next week? Yeah, he's supposed to say something good next week. Next.
Is he's gonna, uh, go ahead and look at all the parts now?
We can do all of it. We trying to do all of it. Next. Next on the agenda, uh, I'm getting all these calls from the county residents about annexation. And you got county citizens worrying about being annexed inside the city limits. Me personally, I think that's a bad idea, because, uh, you doing it for the wrong reasons. You, you, you annexing for money, and I don't think that's a good reason to annex. Uh, I used to be on the city board for sixteen years. Marblestone, if I'm not thinking correctly, was annexed way before I got on that board in nineteen seventy or something. Mister Wilson, they just not fixing Marblestone, bitch, you dialing twenty-two. They got all kinds of drainage dishes in the city right now. And they talking about annexing some of the county in the city, they can't keep up with what they doing now and ta- talking about annexing part of the county. Think it's a bad idea, uh, that is not a way to add more people to the city. When you get the right kind of jobs, people come in, you add more people to the city like that. Uh, Marquette Town Road funding, excuse me, I got a call from the Democrat, and I just told her, uh, I'mma wait till the money is in the bank before I really, really make a comment on Marquette Town Road, don't get me wrong, I'm, I'm thankful uh, that everything passed, and thank everybody for doing whatever they did, but here go my thing right here. And the engineer is gone, so Scott, could you? Cap was out on this because, just like those, he done repeat projects, was more than what they supposed to be. Guess what else gonna be more than what it's supposed to be? Marquette Town Road, so if the federal government was nice enough to give us two point four, do you think the state could give us the rest?
Do I think the state will?
Well, they got all that money, they don't know what to do with it, so we need to make a proposal to our legislators. First of all, we need to get our engineer to find out what the real price gonna be on Marquette Town Road, and what we need to add to the two point four, and see can we get it from our legislators. Uh, that's what I think we need to do, I'm just one too. Uh, excuse me, I don't have a problem with, uh, the movie people. I think they, uh, do a great job, I'm so glad we on the map for, uh, having all these movies in Mississippi, but it's just one supervisor. I believe that we need to have a contract in place when they, uh, utilizing our buildings, our property, or whatever the case may be, where if somebody get hurt,
I don't know if I talked to you or you about it, but that's the exact same thing.
Uh, we talked about that, I talked to the, the inside like that, that would need some of that place, and also.
Just like everything else did.
Yeah, yeah, I, I, so talk to them about that, Supervisor Gray, like, they go to other places, and, and don't get me wrong, we glad to have them here and doing movies and stuff like that, because it helps, uh, not just in Adams County, but they also go to other places, and when they use their properties and stuff, they give them some kind of incentive for using their properties, or they pay for what they're doing there. We, we just give and give and give, and we also talked, you know, uh, one of the representative, said one time, yeah, it's good having here, that's all good, and, you know, and I correct, I, I, I wanna make sure I'm doing this right, but we also need to have them to give back, they need to give back a little bit too. So I don't know if they're giving back or anything, but that would be good if they would to help, help us out too. You know, for using things that we are providing.
Whatever the board decides, we need a policy in place when we're using, just like when, I mean, people could come in, any, say, I need to use the board service, it is not interfering people, we let people, welcome people to used county facilities all over the place. But we need a policy in place, just like we have the safety room, just like we have an equine center, just like we have problem park, all these places have policies in place for you to use county facilities. We need that, just like.
I, I, I'm just more concerned, uh, about who are, who you contacting to be able to utilize our facilities and not us, cause at the end of the day, we responsible.
And, and that's exactly what the policy needs to say, everyone will know it, they'll have single phone contact, and it'll work. I don't think anyone's trying to do anything wrong, it's just like the safety center, or any, any other thing that we have, single place we get contact, everything's in line, and then people gonna be on a little hub, if it's, I'm just guessing if it's for that, cause it is for everything else. For that, you still know, so we all, see a movie, we're not sitting there in Austria, you know, we all know.
So, so at this point with Marquette Town Road, how do we get the correct, uh, figure? I know it's gotta go through engineering, I know, how do we get the correct figure, like, within a week time, where we can submit something to our legislatures and see if, okay, we, we, we got two point four, can y'all give us a million dollars to finish this out, what do we need to do?
We need to update our estimate. And you will not have a final figure of any project until what, till you open up bids, our estimate was four ninety something for the last C W P, but.
I, I understand, yeah, but we know two point four, it, it's, it's not going to be close.
That's right.
So what do we need to do?
We need to update our estimate.
How do we do that?
Well, engineers are the ones that provide your estimate. And if we have parted ways with J K S, if we're moving to a different engineer, then we tell our new engineer to.
So do y'all need to make a motion?
Man, can they can make, can make a motion, we can just direct our, our, our mess to do that, you know.
Well, what do y'all come?
I still make a motion, so.
So, move. Much more serious about, right, same, my supervisor Hudson, any discussion? All the paper?
If they are moving down our estimate.
What if you motion, that's that. You get a.
It's a big figure.
From I M A.
Uh, the last thing I have, uh.
Oh, yeah.
Wait here.
All the paper.
Alright.
All the, uh, so.
I know we got, uh, something to scout, I'm gonna let you down there, but the last thing I have is, uh, I was telling Robert earlier, uh, um, the, uh, M L K project went well, when they closed their road, all the trash had went to Quinman Road, and it has destroyed Quinman Road. Only good thing back then, when it was a gravel road, you can go grade it off and kind of remove the potholes, but now they got that, what is that stuff, that building?
It's a asphalt.
Chip seal.
Chip seal.
Chip seal, which is the worst thing in the world for that road, cause they messed it up, they got so many holes out there, uh, if you go out there in your truck, you gonna have to get a friend in the line, so, uh, I'm gonna have to do something get them with that road out there. And I guess my last deal, I can't find it. See what I do? See what I do, now, see if he goes out to the Moseby family, uh, Profit family, I think that was Carl Profit wife that pays, Brown family, Morelles family, uh, the Price family, the Chapman's family. And, uh, their young ladies came up in here, uh, with the Marquette Town Road group, me and Lyndon, her mom pays to the Lyndon family. And I think, uh, this bridge water miner, is Alicia's sister, is that her sister? She's a bridge water miner, I think that's her sister, anyway, now see if we go out to them, and that, uh, concluding my report.
Supervisor.
Okay, well, yeah, uh, one sec, first, we're gonna have a, uh, grant community, uh, uh, neighbor's wife on, uh, the twenty-fourth of this month, from sixty-seven, and we're gonna be talking about the Minnesota property there in that area also. Um, another thing, um, Jan did call me from the Democrat too, by the time I called her, I think she had already rented the report, but she, uh, was calling for a, um, a, um, comment. I, I wanted to say in that comment that, uh, I'm thankful to our congressional people. I felt like, uh, the trip to Washington D.C., as, uh, we always say, Supervisor Gray, uh, the only way you can get something done is being at the table with the congressional people. So I felt like the Wa- the trip to Washington D.C. that, uh, was taken was a, a big help. Uh, be when we met with, uh, Senator Cindy Hyde and the rest of the congressional people. They was on board and they took it serious, and, um, also thankful for the, uh, city being a part of it. Uh, they pushed it all the way to mayor, the aldermen, they, uh, pushed the Marquette Town project also too. So I just feel like, you know, it's good, it, it's been, we've been waiting, but it's come to fruition, and hopefully soon that we can see it happen. And that's all I have.
Okay, um, I had, uh, some concern about the Kingston Community Center, I think somebody rented it recently, you get out there and all the trash getting thrown over outside, and who is, is supposed to be checking that? Do they check these facilities weekly, or do we know what the secret is? At one time, we talked about maybe putting somebody on our app, that somebody be, go behind the people that are supposed to clean up after they rent it?
I hate to say things I'm not for sure, I'm not sure that was the one that.
Yes, someone close over.
Make sure it was cleaned up.
Mm-hmm. That, uh, Maxon is supposed to go up there and clean it out there, yeah.
Well, and that's the thing, they have a closet, and they go look and see if they're depositing, they've done it.
Yeah, they can get it. They can get it.
So they lose their closets that's not cleaned up.
Well, I don't know how long it was between the last time somebody rented it and this time, but, you know, was it called the Carskins, or was somebody just coming out to play basketball, or softball, or whatever, but, uh, but, apparently needs to be checked more, especially before somebody's going out there to rent it, so what do we do about it?
I'll check, I'm open, nice, also, I check, I make sure, because
It's being looked.
I think it's somebody supposed to come anyway, out there once a week. And, um.
Um, I'm gonna, uh, kinda demonstrate, it probably been managed before, but they are so tired of doing stuff all over there and everywhere.
The same thing is the custodians does it. The custodians.
Custodians.
Yeah, you might say the outside.
Yeah, yeah, outside was playing.
Outside, outside, we have.
I hear it was outside, I don't know what the inside, if I can show the outside, all the trash getting thrown.
Custodians still take care of that.
Yeah, they take care of the trash.
They, they literally brought the truck from behind the Kingston Community Center, yeah, back up. It still bucked it up with trash.
Yeah, custodians take care of it.
I would. It just. Kind of looks bad on them.
I'll check, I'll check, honey.
Uh, okay.
I'm gonna put these on there.
But, uh, I'm gonna check with Corbin also, she's not the only one requesting, she's not supposed to be requesting the deposit until it gets cleaned.
Right, okay, okay, yeah.
And I guess we'll look at the outside of the facility too, if that's what it sounds like.
Where we got? It's supposed to check inside and out.
Well, and it could, like, like Supervisor said, it could very well be, and it wasn't really.
Yeah, well.
And that's, that's, that's really hard for them to catch.
Well, if it happens over the weekend, they don't give until, you know, like, um, the, the week that comes, so they could, anything can happen, the trash can get all over, you know, the grounds on the weekend, and that's what happens out at the grand sometime. I go out there over the weekend and it's, it's just trash everywhere.
Well, I'm hoping that somebody at least, at least once a week, or that's on Monday or Tuesday, goes out and checks every one of these places, but now that spring is in the air and the summer's coming, people are gonna be, have more, have to be out there playing ball, basketball, softball, or whatever. So I just want some.
I'll check.
To that, uh, my condolences go out, I, I think you mentioned, uh, Miss Price, or the price of my end, uh, was seen for shit forever, so curtains and everything, all over the place, yes. And, and, yeah, sweet, sweet lady, um, and, uh, another one of my employees died, this is the second or third one, or passed employees, uh, Dale Angle was forty-two years old, drops dead of heart attack, and it's just like, we, we've been losing a lot of people in Adams County, and Corey Carriage here lately, just, and, and just really good people, my sympathies go out to them. Um, the, uh, Scott, the, uh, Wilson Road, I'm gonna make sure I don't say Whipple Road, he did like, Wilson Road.
And advertise for public hearing, conduct a public hearing, and, you know, people to come and see whether it's.
And we've already started that process?
We haven't gotten the advertising out yet, and that's, I, it's all my things to do, I just gotta pull the thing up and, and put it out there, so.
Okay.
It's not been forgotten.
Okay, okay, just checking on that. Um, what's that? Um, they won't prioritize it, um.
They filed petitions to abandon the road, constituents can file petition to do that. When they do that, we have to advertise for public hearing, conduct a public hearing, it's four factors you look at, and they decide whether, or the board decides whether you wanna ban it or not.
People are trying to go down that road and use the river.
Okay, that, that's my area. Oh, I'm a, I'm a dear, dear, Wilson Road is my.
That's your district, I'm sorry.
It's kind of, it's right there at the end, and they, and I think you're gone, yeah, I think, yeah, they just, uh, they don't want all the traffic on the road, cause, uh, the person that bought the four hundred and sixty-nine acres is going to build a house out there and has a lot of kids, and they just like, they don't want all that traffic coming down through there. And I, I, everybody signed.
At the end, because you know, you got, uh, hunting camp out there, it's too bad hunting, so all of a sudden.
Hold up, yes, man, I think I got a copy of it, I, I'll give it to you after.
Yeah, I'll give a copy of it to you, I'm sorry, I thought was.
I, 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 I didn't even look, we honestly just, maybe they just assumed too, but, uh, I told them I'd get the ball rolling anyway. Um, uh, Mr. Middleton, what are we, when are we gonna make a decision about, uh, what we already did on the bond issue? Or, or, or proceeding with the bond issue, and some of the money be left over to use on, uh, paving roads? Still getting a lot of call about, oh, Whipple Road. Any idea when we'll be able to proceed?
We got an es- estimate of cost, however, you've got your consultant coming in next week to.
Now, he's supposed to say himself.
Excuse me?
He's supposed to.
Tell him. Go to package. And that should have a, that might be a better, you know, estimate of your cost, so.
Okay, and, um, I, I tried to call you last, at the last meeting, I found out something, Scott, and, uh, you never returned a call. Actually, we just missed each other.
Okay, okay, good. I thought I had tried, but, but last week was really bad for me.
I, I stepped into sanitation department and, um, Miss Riley told me that, uh, they contracted the trailer park plantation, or home park, to have the county pick up the trash or, or whatever now, have you heard that?
Have not.
So we don't, so we don't have to worry about the trash going up and down the highway and out of Kingston Road anymore.
That, that's not for this.
So, so I think that problem has been solved, or maybe you, you need to look into it further before we have any other action taken on that, if he has in fact done that. Sixty-two resident, residents or something.
Let me ask you a question, how, how could they do that without coming before the board?
I have no idea if they.
Apartment complexes and places like that, they're required to provide for the rent, it's commercial.
Well, they're paying, they're paying, they're paying, but, uh, I just.
They're paying, they're paying per.
The same, per, yeah, per resident, yeah. He's gonna pay for it, Riley's wanted, I didn't know if you had been involved in that at all, and I wanted.
I have not been anything involved, but the big concern is, not every apartment, like, other apartment complex is anyone do it, and that's, our pickup is for residential pickup, that's considered commercial, even though people live there.
Uh, I wish you'd checked with the Shane's.
We'll check with the Shane's. And I'm sorry, I, I thought I called you back, but didn't.
You, you did, we just didn't, we never got back in touch with each other, fine, that concludes my report after I got you on the hot seat.
I am, I mean, you know.
All right, well, just touching on a few things, um, we're just gonna touch on with the, uh, estimate on the parks and stuff like that. Guy, he come down, and what he did was, uh, because the way we operate, I mean, where we should operate, is, uh, all, everybody operate for Adams County as a whole, that's what we should be doing, so we actually had him come down and he Google Earth, and not, nothing is concrete, he got an idea of what these parks would need, me and Supervisor, President, I just said the President, and, uh, we were all, and he had a few things there, so everybody have their own, uh, little thing that ask, people ask for in their parks, and basically what he was gonna do is, uh, And basically what he was gonna do is, uh he Google Earth, he made sure he can Google Earth each playground. We went to Providence, we went over there, so he was able to pull up Kingston and also it rains. And so basically what he was gonna do is get an estimate and send it back uh a a rough estimate on what he thinks it should need. And you can add and subtract. It was a very interesting uh conversation and and uh it's very flexible because some of the the toys and uh parts that we can do as a whole, we can just actually order them. You don't have to have them to come in and put them together, things that we can put together. So he he he's he's very flexible in trying to save money. You know, he said if if he needed a screw to come in, they could come in. If we need individual parts, then we can get that to.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Go ahead, go ahead, Supervisor Gray.
Okay. And uh but also, uh now I say, I didn't say much on Morgantown. I do want my constituents to realize that I am present too in Morgantown Row. I mean, ain't much to be said about the dollar, the people we represent in that area. And uh it was a, it's a team collaboration with the county, the uh entire city and the lobbyists. And I think everybody has been on board because we all have friends, families and everybody at Morgantown is a very uh heavily traveled road in the county and city as a whole. Uh and thank God for getting some improvement, but once we get a true estimate, then we'll continue to move forward. One thing I do wanna do for uh, and I think I have a lot of people, I get a lot of questions uh from my constituents um on weekly basis on how county government goes and they don't know. And I told them I know uh that this is my Mississippi State Constitution, that for some of these folks out there know, back in the day, we operated under what you call a beat system, where each five supervisors had their own respective district and they did their own uh roads and bridges and they had separate farms. But in today, uh unit system, the unit system of roads, it said that administration should have no road districts, separate road districts, a special road district. And any county supervisor shall not serve as a road district. And the construction and maintenance of roads shall be on a countywide basis. The distribution and use of all roads and bridges, farms, plant, construction, maintenance of county roads, bridges and the purchase ownership, the use of all roads, bridges and the material supply. The employment, the use of roads and bridges labeled for the administration of the county road department shall be on a basis of the need of the county as a whole. And it is determined by the board of supervisors without regard of any district boundaries. Any real or personal property of any road districts becomes the property of the countywide system of the road administrator and the unit system. So basically, I I I need these folks to understand that we operate and we are elected there, but we operate as a whole for the health of entire Adams County. So I just think I needed it, I needed, because some folks I told about our YouTube and I thinking that something will be very good at the bottom and I hear my reports. Give it to me.
Okay, I had a couple of things. I passed around the draft mental health plan that, you know, a couple of us have been working on along with, you know, the state and region and so forth. Uh I did ask for an additional two weeks to uh submit our final plan. Was that?
Be ready.
They did, they granted, they gave an extra two weeks. Um part of our plan that we proposed, it's within the board prerogative, is to kind of reunite with Jefferson and Wilkinson County. I talked with Wilkinson County Administrator, I'd like to reach out to Jefferson County too, to see if they're susceptible. Um do you, I'm not, I don't know if I have good contact for Jefferson, if they wanna start with. Do you have somebody? Okay, so I'll get the engine, we'll reach out to them.
Yes.
And go from there. Um if y'all have any questions about the the plan, you know, if not, that's, I'd like to be the direction, try to head towards.
Ms. Ms. Attorney, why you mentioning Johnson County when we was there? Well, who was that?
Who was that, the uh southwest building, uh the planning meeting, uh quarter meeting in Brookdale?
Supervisor Gang did talk to two of their supervisors and kind of like was trying to bring them up to speed and what who's trying to do down here. So it ain't like they don't know, but I know she knows the county administrator.
And that's that's how I started. I happened to know the county administrator Wilkinson just said, hey, here's what we're thinking. Really positive return and like you said, let's get with our, get our chance to court, get somebody so we can start discussing and give everyone advice.
You know what? Each one of us more supervisors come down there, I just think we need to just holler and let them know what we planning on doing and we trying to break this down into three counties, which is Adams County, Wilkinson County and Jefferson County.
Right, what I I don't think anyone has run. The the heart of our plan is the way we, the way we started looking around across the state, seeing what works and what doesn't work. You know, what federal law requires, and that's the starting point. Federal law requires for you to serve mentally, mental illness, uh you know, people with that type of situation. You're supposed to solve it on a community level. You're supposed to personally treat them in the community without removing them from the community. Uh that's what federal law requires. And so we've looked at this and said, what is our real community? I don't think, not that we have anything against residents, I don't think our community really was Pike County. I don't think we consider ourselves part of the same community. But Wilkinson, Jefferson and Adams, there is a community. I think we drive every day, we see a Wilkinson County resident, Jefferson County. I don't think you can go to McDonald's without seeing, you know, one of there or whatever, you know what I'm saying? So eh eh on top of that, our our Chancery District, our chancellor served those same three counties actually served Cleveland as well. But, you know, so that kind of flows really well. Mental health lunacy hearings start at the Chancery level. Um so I think if there's a lot of synergy between that community. And then when we look at what our what our community, our current region actually did, they divided their large region into two subregions anyway, an east and a west. And so you're already taking a large region, and that's not what the law says. The law doesn't say region, it says community. You've taken a large region that tried to subdivide it into communities itself. So this says that's that's not satisfying, in our opinion, federal law. What should happen is we should form our own community-based treatment. That way, all the services represented within that region is also within the same community. Now, if, for instance, Pike County offers a service and they have to travel to Pike County, I still don't think that services our community because they have to what? Lead the community. So that was the, that was the genesis of what we're proposing. In no way are we trying to cut off funding from our neighbors, from from Pike and all of them. We're we're on the contrary, we think that each community has to be funded, you know, wholly, that way if it it follows federal law. So that's what we submitted. We asked, you know, another region that got highly, you know, good marks on it and so forth. We've talked to uh some of the state legislatures around it and so it's what we're proposing. You know, they don't have to follow it, they can obviously do whatever they want. But that would be the plan, so we kind of start from the ground up with a region that adequately reflects a community and would start providing community-based services from the ground up. Using the services that generates additional revenues, starting with those along with, you know, some tele uh crisis and a uh mobile crisis unit, starting with that, that should solve, you know, about fifty percent of our acute problems right here in the community. At the same time, using those services that generate additional revenues and then that further revenue goes to other services that we can't already match. So that's what's being proposed, you know, the, that, that makes sense? Any questions on that?
We don't need no motion on that.
I don't think we need any motion, uh if, you know, I, if you'd like to make a motion, I might help.
Uh well, I'm gonna give them a check.
I'll let me read.
I kind of read it. I like the idea. One of my questions to them was, you got all this satellite officer staff on part-time. It it seemed like a waste, a total waste of money. Uh most people aren't getting serviced anyway, they're all coming here anyway to Adams County because this is where they knew they could get help. So I'm I'm I like the direction you're going.
Oh, oh, you move on, I wanna thank you uh for all your input. I wanna thank uh Ms. uh Catherine McChaffrey, clerk and Supervisor Gang, because I I I was just learning, you know. But I think we came up with a good uh idea and if they go along with what we said and fund it, I think we'll see some great results.
And it may be some, you gotta start fresh, there's not gonna be instantaneous. You know, probably take a year to get up and going if they accepted this plan. I would say it'd take a quarter to get really the primary services done and then a year till you get some financial real growth and so they can start offering those extended services on it. Um yeah, it's, it's be a challenge for whoever gets it, if that's what they do. Again, having those, that same core community is gonna allow us to have a much better, much closer relationship with a permission. It's gonna allow our director to have a better relationship with us. And I'm not criticizing our current director. When you have nine counties over the course of geography that she has, it's really hard to be uh in good good relationship with all the board of supervisors, nine different board of supervisors, umpteen different cities, umpteen nine different school districts at least, you know, and so forth. Whereas three, you can hopefully manage those three supervisors, uh market to those school districts and those cities and so forth. And really, that's how you're gonna get a lot of your services, is having that close relationship. Any other comments or questions?
I mean, we just, I mean, I'm, we we sit down and I think it was a um a really great idea because um along with uh Chancellor Kirk and uh Supervisor Gray and and uh Attorney Scott Slow, we sit down and it made a lot of sense that Pike County is their own community over here. We are over here on the river, we just fuck those folks out. And some of those requirements that you had to have a crisis intervention team on the scene within what, an hour? An hour and a half, so, you know, and then we over here, if they busy, how are we, we on the end of that? So we get the last of the services and uh if we can put our community together and, you know, the proposal is give people like the sheriff, the judges, uh the youth judges, those people see mental health people, the sheriff knows sometimes that some of those folks ain't got no business in jail, they need mental help. The 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 judge over there know even, and believe it or not, it starts with a lot of it in kids. So when you catch some of those kids over there in uh juvenile detention, he don't always need to go to jail. He actually need to start getting some help at that point. And I think with that allow with Adams County school system, Jefferson County, Wilkinson County, that it would be very feasible for uh the the this whole community and we could better serve all the people from the uh children all the way to the adult program that they have. And I think it would be really, really nice and everybody will be uh within the timeframe in the area that they can get the help that they need. There you go.
Okay. Anything else?
Did you wanna do a motion to, oh, you said you wanted to have some time review, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, I was gonna update groups two and three for E W Ps. Um for group two, we have a right of way executed with Churchill Road and we have uh a right of way executed on number eighty-four. Old, I'm sorry, Old Highway eighty-four, number three. Old Highway number two, there's still some questions about a access point that Brant is getting back with the owner. See if they can satisfy them on that question. For Cemetery Roads ten and twelve, the owner has requested a meeting with the supervisor, myself, Robbie and Brant. Uh so hopefully have that that sometime this week to see what we can do to address it. Their concerns are, they think the drainage expands beyond what it should. They think that the current E W Ps are not being maintained like they should. And they're very displeased with the littering, uh the garbage being dumped on Cemetery Road. Um I did express to them that garbage is a universal problem within the county. We really have tried all sorts of things to try to address it. I'm not sure, we're welcome for any ideas, you know, but they said we just gotta do better. So I'm hoping we can all meet and find out if we can get that right of way donated or not. That's on group two. On group three, we have Kutsu Lane and Old Meadow Rain, Providence. The guy said that that's Lindsey Callen, he said he'll he'll sign and just have to get it to him. And he signed, I don't anticipate that being a problem. Um on Deerfield Road, the guy came out this weekend and he said that uh he's fine with it. He signed, he'll catch up with me today. So it appears that group three uh should be ready to, ready to go. Um I can reach out and make sure that the uh uh bidder still want, the lowest investment bidder still wants to accept it or if he wants to reject it, say that because their bid's only good for, I think, sixty days. Uh but if they wanna continue on with it, they certainly can. If not, the next lowest, if they'll honor their bid, we can go out there and accept them. So that's where we're at on group three. That one appears to be good. Group two, we're still running into some addition. I think that's.
Do we have a timetable for that?
On group two, if I can meet with Cemetery Road, Cemetery Road, Cemetery Road this week with Supervisor Gray and with Robbie and the engineer, if we can meet and get that addressed and then it'll be up to Brant to come up to, uh for Old Highway, I think it's number three. I don't wanna, no, Old Highway three's good. Old Highway two, uh I still need Old Old Highway two, get that addressed with Brant. You know, we should know whether we can do those projects by the end of the week. So don't require to hold your bid open.
Right.
Um so.
If we can know something this week, then we'll hold it.
And I know y'all are holding your your bid bonds in jeopardy and that's not our intention or whatever. With these projects, and same thing happened with group four, they sent the advertisements out at the same time that they sent, you know, the legal descriptions and so forth. And so you're having to try to catch all these while the bids are done. We can't force, last week we can force people to give us right of ways, but it that's not a fast process on these trips and not something we've traditionally done on these E W Ps.
So you gonna set the meeting up?
I'm gonna try to set that meeting up, Supervisor Gray.
Do we know how many of the six sites on group four already have advertisements executed?
None of, okay, I say that. Clear, the highest, was that on?
No, sir, that was by itself, we've already started.
That was by itself?
Yes, sir.
Uh none of the right of ways have been acquired on group four. The legal work on half of them has been completed, the title work on half of them's been completed. And I'm checking for an update for the other half. Once you get the legal work, then you have to try to find that, the the actual landowners themselves. Get them to sign the right of way and sometimes they're, you know, willing to sign the right of way. Sometimes they have a bunch of questions of what's going on. It really just depends on on the landowner. For whatever reason, these past group have been a little bit more questions asked than than the previous ones. So, you know, it just depends on the owners. I say that, one of them I sent in the mail, first time it's ever happened, sent a right of way in the mail with a return envelope, they signed it, notarized, turned it back. Never happened, even though we do it all of them, but uh, you know, there's no idea of of when we can get that, get that going. So just depends, tracking people down. If they're local, then and it's one landowner, that's usually pretty easy. When it becomes heir property, that's difficult, especially if it's been a few years since they've genicated their their assets. Um any questions on the E W Ps? Um Raven has an inmate that needs an MRI. Uh the hospital has sent over an agreement. The agreement provides, uh I sent back some comments on it to make sure that it conforms to the statute. The, they're acceptable with those with those comments, so I asked the board to approve. It's an agreement with merit to get an MRI. It's based on the Medicaid pricing, um which we're required to pay anyway. Um but anyway, if if I get the board's approval for it.
So I have to do it anyway.
You have to do it anyway, but this, at least they're making sure the prices.
Motion my Supervisor Hutchett, second my Supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
Okay, for the recreation, I had a working estimate going on. I think it's great to get outside input. I wish I would've been smart enough to think of that myself and to come up with that, that solution on it. I think it's a great idea. Certainly, as soon as that comes in, I'll update our, y'all get the, whatever the response is, update your list, pricing, update the pricing, and send that out for y'all. Certainly, that's, I think, a wise decision, because other than taking my kids to playgrounds, I don't have a lot of expertise. I will say this, I took my kids to Duncan Park, you know, I was, I was a bachelor this weekend. Took my kids to Duncan Park and there wasn't any playground set or anything up there. So that was, we had to scramble around and find a new playground set. So it'll be good having all that. Anything else that I had? I know that there's some menace and so forth, and there's the abandonment. I do apologize Supervisor Hutchett, I really thought that was, that was a.
Yeah, I don't wanna do anything until, because I see a landowner back there that ought to talk to everything to it. He's not on here, so.
Sure.
I don't wanna do anything until.
And let me make sure we're, we're real clear. If you remember with Safer, or whatever name is Safer, they filed a petition to close a road. The statute, the way it's written, a landowner, doesn't have to even be live on the street, can file a petition with the board to abandon a road, and we gotta follow the process to do it. So that has to be done. It should've been, we should've had a notice and so forth already in. Just trying to get to it, I will get to it. We'll get a notice in, we still have to follow through the motion, just like Safer. That's not, the supervisor in particular, his district didn't, didn't want that to happen. There was grounds to keep the road public. The road kept public. They appealed it to the Supreme Court, Supreme Court affirmed our decision. You know, that's, you have to go through the motion, so if this is confined, if you would wanna encourage that landowner to be aware of it and come in there and do it. So, for sure. And I, if I'd have known that was your district, I'd, I try to keep you. If I know, if it's anyone's district, I try to let them know, yeah, this is in your district. Whatever, keep you informed, y'all, I know y'all wanna know what's, what's going on. So we'll make sure that that gets in there. I think that's it, yeah.
Ms. Lewis?
I have two items, actually three. Need to have the April bond spread across the minutes. We just have one, it's Jocelyn Colston. Just the motion to spread that across the minutes.
Motion my Supervisor Gray, second my Supervisor Hutchett, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed?
We have a homestead chargeback. Actually, thankfully, this one was called when the notice was sent out before it was actually even put into the system. But we need to have spread across the minutes for this property. Currently, it's owned by John and Kathy White. It was owned by a Mr. Gall Town. And the property was sold back in June of twenty twenty-one. Of course, the notice is just now being received. So the current owners did not have notice at the time they purchased the property. So we just need to have this one removed.
You heard any questions? Motion my Supervisor Gaines, second my Supervisor Wilson, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? As I said.
So last item I have, and you may have listened to this in your report, Mr. President, but I received the registration forms for the conference for the supervisors and Attorney Slowber, County Administrator, myself, with the summer conference. I don't know if we're gonna go ahead and get approval for travel.
I think we already did.
Yeah, we did.
I think we did, and I do have the forms.
Okay, I wasn't sure if we had that approved. That's all.
For travel.
With our redistricting, excuse me, forgot to add that. I've been in contact with our consultant. We've got them in contact with the people that have various informations that he's asking for. One of them was the GeoPortals database. Another one is the mapping system. One of the things, wanna make sure he had every elected officials that's in a district or, you know, area that's not the entire county, get their address, make sure that that doesn't change. And when it becomes to changing lines, he's gonna be, he has said, look, I wanna be able to contact each supervisor, making sure, talk to them, understand their, their district, because they, gosh, you know your district pretty well. And so I think this is gonna be a really good relationship. They'll leave public hearings and so forth. From a time perspective, he says, there's still plenty of time. He wants to go ahead and get it done, and so forth, but we don't need to hit a panic button. We can make sure that we have a good district, good lines if need be changed. But he, that's what I really like hearing about him, is that he wanted to be able to reach out to some of his supervisors, who'd love to be able to communicate back and forth too, so, yeah. And all of your addresses are given to him, so y'all aren't gonna get, roll yourself outside of your own district, so. Ms. Gaines?
Yes, I've received the six message from Martha Bradley. He said that the A O C right away, that the county wired delay of opening tomorrow until one o'clock P M. Delay of opening until one o'clock. So we getting some bad weather.
Under a policy, the county administrator does that? You don't really, you just do it, or an email or something? What's that? I can't discuss it, then we'll get the.
I have an order, one order, wait, it's really two orders, but I only have one in my hand. It's Judge Sanders made a request to hire two more bailiffs. Elizabeth Golden and Charles Latham.
That?
It's an order.
Yeah, so we, we have talked about, gotten that under, under control. And actually, the judge also did, or had our staff attorney also do research. When we researched who's supposed to be doing bailiffs and so forth, it falls under the sheriff's purview of appointing bailiffs. That's, I think it's fair to say, it's not been done since I've been here. That's not how it's done in other courtroom bailiffs, but for circuit judges, the sheriff provides that. If it's not a full-employed deputy, then there's a set statute amount that they get, and it's fifty-five dollars a day. I did talk to the sheriff, and I talked to the judge, get on the same page. You know, this, this is how it needs to happen. She was on board, she said, yeah, that's, if that's what the law says, is that the sheriff points the bailiffs, not the judges. So I don't think the judge, the judge, I don't think the sheriff, talking to him, he didn't wanna change any of the bailiffs or anything like that. But from now on, the bailiffs are appointed by the sheriff's, sheriff's office.
So let me ask you a question.
Listen, I need to come back to that, because I did, it's a problem we need to address with Justice Court. I did go to Justice Court a couple times, and it's been uncovered, you know what I'm saying? And we need to figure out how we gonna get somebody to Justice Court and keep them, you know, a bailiff in Justice Court. Sheriff, you got any input on that?
Yeah, I actually got somebody to sign Justice Court, so they, yeah, they are.
Yeah, well, I'm not saying you'll have them sign, but I've been over there. They not there, I've been there twice, and they had not been there. I stopped by to visit, and wasn't anybody in there the two times I stopped by.
Was it during lunchtime?
No.
Because if it's during lunchtime, they gone.
This was two or three o'clock, and it wasn't nobody there. I mean, I've been over there.
Were they having court though? Because if they having court, no, they not gonna be here, and they not having court now. If they not having court, then they don't, they go out and serve the papers. The Peter Stone is assigned to Justice Court period. Now, if y'all want them there the whole time, just sitting there, I just like utilizing manpower.
Well, you, you gonna have somebody there with their office taking up that money, and they feel, they feel some kind of way of collecting money, it's a, a thing full of women, and you know you have a lot of people. Most of the time when people go in Justice Court, they already have tickets, they already feel some kind of way it's aggressive. And you got women there, and they feel like they need the safety of to have someone there.
Ain't no problem, I just make him be there eight to five, month to Friday.
Well, I just need to make sure he come.
Tell him nothing done deal.
Okay, I'll make sure I communicate back, I just, now you can move forward. Because I just tried, you know, we wanna be, I walk in and visit, but you know, I see the office all the way around. If I see something, we all with the dressing, and one thing that we gotta do is, we gotta communicate. And even if something that is not putting anybody in a spot, but if something is not getting done, the only way we gonna get it fixed is just to tell them to communicate.
Yeah, I don't have no problem with that. The only thing is, when he out serving, he out doing stuff that them other constables supposed to be doing. So if he, if he need to be in the building from late to five, let the, let the constable pick up their slack, do what they need to do, and I'm good with that. I don't have a problem.
Do, do that job.
Buddy was there, he was there all the time, but he was doing services.
Right.
Helping doing affidavits.
That's what I'm saying.
Justice Board, but he wasn't out serving, that was mine, he was there.
And, and one thing about those constables, they beg for papers to be served, so I know it shouldn't be.
It's okay.
We just need to make sure.
Hey, it's take care, when I walk, when I sit back down, I'm gonna sit there and mention, let him know from eight to five, you part. Okay, right there. Now, far as the judges go with the bailiffs, she did call me about those two people, I don't have issues. I just, you know, well, you know, my thing was, they, I had never appointed a bater, you know, since I've been in office, but if that's what they want, I don't have a problem with it. But those two people, I don't have any issue with.
That was my question, so we don't have a problem with it.
Nah, I don't, I don't have a problem with it.
Order from the judge, and he just said it's the sheriff's responsibility. The sheriff just said he don't have a problem with it, so I guess we can move that order.
Yeah, she'll be moved from here on out, just.
It needs to be.
Gotta come out of Sheriff's budget, then come out of the service, yes, but.
I got a problem with that.
Yeah.
They gotta move the money.
They gotta move the money over.
Now, they can't. They don't move the money around.
I didn't think it was tied with the year that much.
Yeah, there's.
It ain't that much, yeah, it ain't that much.
I don't like people.
Well, just break on over though.
My Supervisor Hutchett, second my Supervisor Gaines, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? As I said.
And I know we had another thing, there was an administrative assistant over in Judge Sanders' office. She's reimbursed by A O C, is that correct, Angie?
No, we pay A O C.
We pay A O C on it. She's making twenty, and I can't say, I can't, I had the paperwork, I thought I left it on your chair. We'll, we'll find and bring this back to the board, just wanna get this to the board's attention. When we were doing raises, she wasn't included on it. The amount that they're asking for, what was it, from twenty-five to twenty-eight? As soon as I get the paperwork, I'll bring it back to the board, so.
She wasn't included in the raise because we, A O C paid her. She, she's not on our payroll. A O C paid her. It's in the deal to Adams County, and Adams County pays through a council payout. So she's not on, you know, we paid, but she's not on our payroll list.
Well, I don't even know, I would have to wait, maybe that's because they approved today, because we getting reimbursed from A O C anyway.
No.
A O C paid her. We paid her, but A O C reimburs us, right? Then do not.
No, A O C paid her, and we reimburse them on A O C, right?
So it's an additional three thousand that she doesn't pay.
So.
She works in the courthouse, she's the administrative assistant for the judge, yeah.
So is she considered an account, a employee?
She's a state employee.
A state employee.
But she works in the county office.
So we pay.
We pay through council payout.
Does state reimburse?
No, we reimburse the state.
This is what I'm hearing, we paying. So we did give her a raise, so why we gotta give her three dollar raise?
She didn't get one, she got, she get paid through a council payout. She's not in our payroll system.
Know what I'm saying? Why not five percent?
You're just getting what she, what Judge Sanders asked.
We didn't get five percent, that's it.
I'm, I'm just asking a question, man. I, I don't know, I just, from a kind of simple job, she works with the cap, and y'all paying us three more dollars, why y'all ain't pay us three more dollars? That's how I'm doing it. Man, how much, how much dollars she make?
She makes twenty-five, and we asking her twenty. And, yeah.
But she, she's asking for a increase. She's not asking for a raise, she is asking for an increase. So this is, this is beyond the raise now, because raise was given back. So this is something different. So she's asking for really an increase.
Nah, it ain't different, she's saying she didn't get it, when we was giving it.
Right, she didn't, but that's a five percent, because it's through, it didn't go through payroll. They got their own payroll.
Five percent don't be a dollar twenty-five now.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't understand where the rest of the money.
It, it, yeah, a court order, it has a court request.
It's a request. Not a request, it's a request. She said, she's saying that.
Five, five percent, dollar twenty-five, and not three dollars.
Well, she's not saying two thousand dollars from twenty-five thousand to twenty-eight. Now, they probably.
Does the judge know what percentage she's getting?
Twenty-six hundred dollars. Twenty-six hundred.
Does she know? Yeah, I don't know if she, I can't say she know. It's probably she may have asked for it during budget time and didn't give it in, is that what you're saying?
Or she just.
I wish she was here.
She'll be here, I, you know.
Come to the meeting, because whenever we talk about money, it's always gonna be some difference of opinion. Somebody gonna feel like somebody shouldn't get paid, somebody always feel like it's too much. Somebody gonna say like this, we need people at the meeting for justification.
We definitely can put her on there, push her in.
No, I mean, you know, I don't.
We have an objection to someone that's working in the courthouse and getting a five percent raise. If not, then let's just do it instead of having her argue about it.
But I'm, but what I'm saying, I always say this, and I say this anytime. If you're a county employee, you run your office. I don't work for the, the judge runs their department. Brant runs her department, Karen runs their department, Eva runs her department, the sheriff runs his department. When these folks actually, we don't give a fuck about these folks that time, so it's hard for me to say, come in here and say, well, I shouldn't give them this, and I shouldn't give them that, because I don't deal with the, the operation. So if you needed some raises, which I have no problem with paying folks, if it's in the budget, but the people who are asking for them, because there's always gonna be some question, from somebody around this table, somebody gonna have a question when it come over money. So if you, you and G O has a question, I have a question, all of us have a question. So if you ask for some money, it would be a good thing from now on to ask people that needs to come, because somebody gonna wanna ask.
She's perfectly.
But it's time, but I should recommend that she get it, because she didn't get it. She did not receive the raise when.
I don't have a problem with it, you know, I'm, I can receive a raise. I don't have a problem with it.
She didn't get it.
I don't have a problem with it, I give you those.
My Supervisor Gaines, second my Supervisor Hutchett, any discussion?
This is for the five percent raise.
Just for the recommendation, I made a motion for a recommendation from the judge.
And I'm saying.
What is the rate?
Twenty-two, up to twenty, twenty-eight thousand. It's a three, three thousand dollar increase.
All in favor? All opposed? Make sure they come, it's not like she's unwilling.
They need to be the department head, so you be here.
All right, is that all you have, Mr.? Is that all you have? All right, we're seeing my folder, I've got a pay rate change for Caitlin Green. Given out of attention, she, this person's being changed from full-time to part-time. Hourly rates twelve dollars, annual rate twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. Is there a motion?
Sign up.
Motion my Supervisor Hutchett, second my Supervisor Wilson, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? As I said. I have a letter here from N double A C P requesting another meeting on March twenty-eighth at eleven A M. This is a carryover from that meeting they had, looks like on December sixth. No, she made the request on December sixth. That meeting was a month ago? That meeting was at Safer, I think so. So they're requesting, they're requesting. So they're requesting, they're requesting, uh.
About two weeks ago.
Board, uh, we're inviting all elected board members to this meeting, which will be held at Adams County Safer, it's eleven A M on Monday, March twenty-eighth.
Here to the man association, San Taut County.
I had a deposition scheduled that day.
Let me ask you a question, so do you come in on that list, and approve that date, where that bill can be available for that day?
I cannot make that.
I'm, I mean, I'm assuming they already reached out, I could go there, try straight or something.
We'll ask for that, feel better.
Twenty-eight, you say?
Yep, eleven A M.
So we gotta recess to that date?
N W A C P.
Well, N W A C P, Monday, March twenty-eighth, eleven A M, Safer. I have a, uh.
Is that gonna be set, gonna be set to that, that day, and have that board meeting?
No, it's next Monday, we don't have a board meeting next week.
What I'm saying is, it's that one should be at board meeting this.
Yeah, it's gonna be considered.
Okay, I cannot make that pick, I already got something scheduled that day, is that okay with the board?
Uh, to my knowledge, uh, as one of the board people, we, we not gonna be making no motions, and, 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 and we just going to, a ten, we ain't gonna make no motions, and do nothing, well, we gonna have, we just have some weakness, but I, I wouldn't think, I don't, I don't think we gonna be making no motions.
Just making sure, right, that's what I assumed last time we.
We, we gonna just listen to whatever, whatever, I mean, if something come up, then we not gonna do nothing if we don't have you there.
Thank you, just making sure, anyone else? Maybe not be there.
Adams County, application for review for Reagan Campbell Smith. Uh, Monday, April fourth to, month to Fri, through Friday, April eighth, forty-hour vacation time.
Oh.
Motion Supervisor Gaines, you got a second?
Can I speak on that, because the last time, well, she was out, we had to, uh, temporarily, we had hired someone to take her place for that weekend, we hired, um, Phil Campbell.
This says, uh, following arrangements have been made to take care of my duties, and my absence, assistant will address all minor issues, jail administrator notified to send out, for acute emergency issues.
It'd be cheaper high kill. That's just me saying it, because you start stacking up all the hospital bills that come in, to remind you of time.
I mean, but Ms. Gaines, you addressed it, is that your recommendation?
Um, to, hi.
You heard the West County Administrator?
I'm moving.
Motion Supervisor Gray, you got a second? Second Supervisor West, any discussion?
Only discussion I have, she, she hears from me with what's going on, because she didn't give it before.
Yes, yes.
All in favor?
She works in prison now.
All opposed? Eyes out.
That's what I was just gonna ask, I've already spoken with Reagan, no, I haven't spoken with Miss Cleo, I have not spoken with Miss Cleo, but her Reagan.
Reagan spoke to her.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay.
All right, we did the motion for, to, to hire the, uh, part-time, we need a motion for, uh, Reagan's request for leave.
I'm moving.
Motion Supervisor, for a motion?
I'm moving, I'm moving. He did the motion.
I need the motion.
To take care of the.
Leave.
Right, because somebody said.
But we didn't care.
Second Supervisor Gray, all in favor?
All right.
All opposed? Eyes out. Um, request for travel for Supervisor Hutchins, Agent nineteen, twenty-second Southwest P D D.
That's been already approved. Already approved.
All of them.
Yeah, that's what you have, uh, Southwest P D D.
Yeah, all that been approved.
That's been approved, all of these be assigned.
Okay. I believe that's all I've got. Uh, we still have this, uh, jury appointment.
Jury?
Dead.
Did she recommend somebody?
Nope.
It's all apart.
Yeah, ain't no one, but I said I've been over there.
Who had?
Yeah, this says, uh. One member shall be appointed by the board supervisor.
Who was that?
Can't answer that.
Nobody knows who was.
They mean blow it down, huh?
They're all there for you.
But they get off it so long.
Yeah.
That's what deals.
And what is this position, Scott?
Jury commissioner.
Jury.
What they do?
Help, pick out jars or something.
This says three members who will serve a four-year term, so whoever was in there got reappointed.
Oh, we got reappointed.
Oh, well, they were already appointed already?
No, 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 no.
Right, no, she asked, she knows.
My suggestions have, I will send N, Angie, copy of the statute of what they're supposed to do, Angie to pick out a, why I shouldn't do it, is, you know, I had trials with jury, so I don't know. You, you know, but I'll send her, this is what the commissioner does, and she'll come back to that next meeting, she'll come back to the next meeting.
I can say, is Mary Helen Woods, did they give it on you the version of twenty, or four-year term?
Mary, yeah, Mary Wood, that's not wrong.
Does she want to be reappointed?
Her as jury commissioner?
Does she want to be reappointed?
This, this Eve on the phone, she said, I'm a Fletcher.
Also, why don't we appoint someone?
He's on the phone with you.
She's saying I'm a Fletcher. Huh? Yeah. So do you, you got a recommendation for her?
Okay, I'm a Fletcher. Thank you. I have a recommendation, I'm a Fletcher.
The Senator, little thing.
Yes, yes, I've never been a smoke to.
She was an elected, elected commissioner for a long time.
Yeah.
She's not, she, probably she no longer.
She no, I don't think, but she still has.
Yeah. You're all saying, well, she can't, if she's, if she's.
So, boy.
Motion Supervisor Gaines, second Supervisor Hutchins, all in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Eyes out. That's all I have, I need a motion to recess until March twenty-eighth.
Now, Mr. President, uh, who are you going to lend to?
Yes. For what?
Uh.
Justice for?
Oh, you got a recommendation? Uh, some.
I will say, this you got, um, this what, when we do need to pay attention, we got, we do have our administrators stretched, uh, far and far between, we don't have control, we had interviews, nobody brought anything else up about control. You had work that we doing, you gotta do control position, then you doing accounts, what are we doing, Ms. King, accounts receiver, accounts payment, what?
I interviewed.
Huh?
I interviewed Farthing.
Okay, you got.
Oh, 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 you have a recommendation for it?
Um, I do, okay, well, let's get it approved. Carolyn Smith.
Okay, Carolyn Smith.
Carolyn Smith, she's your recommendation, Carolyn Smith.
Okay.
Uh, your district.
So.
Second Supervisor Gaines, second Supervisor Gray, any discussion?
And, no, we made a motion, but, huh?
Any discussion?
Is there H R here today? H R, did I hear today? Can you make sure we take it, so?
All in favor?
Ah.
All opposed? Eyes out.
I want a position that we have, that, okay, I, I did get a call about Justice Court position, there's someone out there, uh, we gonna, give her an opportunity to interview these people, uh, if not, cause she shorted that kind of money, so if we don't interview, she gonna interview.
We're talking about that.
We're talking about that last.
She's gonna select five, which is right here.
Okay, well, she was called, she's, I did talk, so she was gonna figure out what does she have, interviews, or what she can do, oh. She did, she was saying, but they want to have, she want to set up some interviews, and interview, and make recommendations, uh.
She then goes five, to interview.
Okay. Get it, early help fire, in the following, okay.
So you just gotta set up a time in the interview.
So, yeah, we need to try, try to get that, uh, sometimes set up sort of possible, with the interview, whether, I get, gotta see what the weather do, earth, gonna be a move, try to move.
Motion to, I need a motion to recess later.
Uh, so.
Uh, we got, I, I.
Yeah.
Need a motion. Motion Supervisor Hutchins, second.
Yeah, second.
Any, any discussion?
Any discussion, all in favor? All opposed? Eyes out.